City Council, regular session Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, beginning at six thirty P. M. At Twenty-Five Oak Drive. This evening, we have Councilman Matt Broaddus, who's joining us via conference, video conference, because he's a little under the weather. So, we're gonna start off with the pledge allegiance that's gonna be led by Councilwoman Seth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Invocation will be given by Councilman Baker.
Let us pray. Dear most heavenly fathers, thank you for letting us see another day that we never see again. Dear most heavenly fathers, if we get ready to proceed in our meeting, just be with us and bless us and give us the knowledge to make, uh, make great decisions for the city of enchantment. And please bless our first responders as they go out and protect us on a daily basis. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is visitors' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone that's in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that's not on the consent agenda or the regular agenda. Anyone that has visitor comments. All right, let's see anybody. We have presentations. First, we'll have proclamation for Patriots' Day. Let me go ahead and read this proclamation. Hi Gerald Roszansky, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, do hereby proclaim September eleventh, twenty twenty-two, as Patriots' Day in the city of Lake Jackson, and urge each citizen to unite together to honor those who were lost and pray for those who grieve. Whereas, this twenty-first anniversary ceremony honors the victims of the attacks on the World Trade Center, Pentagon, and airline flight takeovers, and the American military service personnel who have died in the battle against terrorism, while others members of the service continue to fight. And whereas, as we remember these tragic events and the thousands of lives lost on that day, we also recall the outpouring of compassion and faith from our nation. And whereas, the events of September eleventh altered our lives, the life of this nation and the world. Whereas, as we face the daily challenges before us, let us never forget, but let us embrace one another along this journey to protect the land of liberty, this land of liberty. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the city of Lake Jackson, do hereby proclaim September eleventh, twenty twenty-two, as Patriots' Day in the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, in testimony where I witness my hand and the seal of the city of Lake Jackson on this, the sixth day of September twenty twenty-two. All right? Just, do we know if there's any events going on, uh, this weekend on the eleventh? Fire departments?
I have not heard anything, no sir.
Well, there's the nine eleven ceremony at the Civic.
Okay. Bit of community interest, but grab you while it can.
There will be a program at the Civic Center on Sunday at two P. M. Uh, the Brazes Wood Buck Band will do prelude music starting at one thirty P. M. If you would like to arrive. The program will last probably about an hour-ish. And then after that, for anybody who would like to remain, we will show the documentary, One Hundred and Two Minutes That Changed America, so.
And will your city council will be singing?
Yes, you're all invited. I will email out the invite tomorrow, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory.
All right, uh, next we have recognized, uh, twenty twenty-two Lake Jackson Female Athlete of the Year, Emerson Montgomery.
Uh, good evening. Um, so, I have the pleasure of recognizing the twenty twenty-two Lake Jackson Female Athlete of the Year, Emerson Montgomery. Uh, she began swimming for the Lake Jackson Swim Team at the age of seven, has quickly learned all four strokes, which led to her early success in her favorite event, the one hundred I. M. Her dedication and passion for swimming is what sets her apart. She hardly misses practice, perseveres through tough circumstances, and encourages her teammates to always give their best. In May of twenty twenty, she was physically and mentally prepared to dominate her summer swim league with incredible times, yet due to COVID, she never got the chance. Like many others, Emerson has patiently waited four years to compete at the top of her swimming age group. She continued to work hard and push herself in practice all season. This summer, Emerson won four golds and two silvers at the TAF Region One State Qualifier meet. At the TAF State Games of Texas, she earned two silvers in the one hundred meter medley and the two hundred meter medley relay. Emerson also won two bronze in the fifty meter brush stroke and the fifty meter butterfly, as well as two eighth-place ribbons in the one hundred meter freestyle and two hundred meter freestyle relay. She is truly an epitome of perseverance. Emerson looks forward to competing in the State Games of America in San Diego in twenty twenty-four. Her ultimate goal is to swim at the Texas A. M. University.
Very good. All right, what's your favorite event? The hundred what?
Hundred I. M.
I. M. All right, great, very good. Thank you very much.
Now I have the male, uh, twenty twenty-two Lake Jackson Athlete of the Year. Uh, this is Derek Gonzalez. Uh, Derek began swimming at six years old. He has quickly learned butterfly stroke at age seven and continued improving, which butterfly is the hardest. I can attest to that one. Uh, Derek earned a gold medal in the twenty-five yard butterfly at twenty-two TAF State Meet, as well as the silver medal swimming the butterfly in the hundred meter relay, or medley relay, and a bronze medal in the twenty-five yard backstroke. Derek is a natural athlete and competitor and is always happy to be at practice. Derek's other passion is fishing in his grandparents' backyard at the local pond or nearby beach. He also plays upward basketball. He's in the Brazes, uh, Brazes Wood Little League Baseball and participates in jujitsu and Muay Thai. As a second grader, Derek achieved all A.'s at Best Brennan Elementary. He loves to read as well, or, and was the top accelerated reader in his first and second grade classes. Derek and his sister led a food drive for the Brazes Care Food Pantry at Best Brennan, uh, Elementary and attends Brazes Point Fellowship Church on Sundays with his family. Since twenty twenty, Derek has won twenty-eight awards for swimming through C. C. A. A., TAF Region One State Qualifier, TAF Summer Games of Texas, and TAF Winter Games of Texas, which is amazing achievement in just three years. Congratulations.
And we'll get all the council for a picture with both of them. So, if you guys wanna line up back there.
Everybody see Matt? Everybody got it? All right, very good. Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda is Declaration of Conflict of Interest. And this is where members of council can declare if they have any conflict of interest on any item being on the consent agenda or regular agenda. Is there any declaration of conflict of interest? All right, hearing that, we'll move forward. We have a consent agenda's next item. Uh, in the consent agenda, item eight on the list has been removed. Okay, so item one is approval of minutes of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Item two is accept boards of commission minutes, Parks Board. Item three is adopt ordinance twenty-two, twenty-two five-one, amending chapter one zero one point one, revising fee charged for water, sewer, garbage, dumpster services, second read. Item four, approved, proposed fee schedule for Civic Center, Jasmine Hall, and South Parking Place. Item five, approve interlocal agreement with Brazoria County for road and bridge maintenance. Item six, approve Yellowstone Landscape in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars under, uh, Choice Partners, uh, contract for contract mowing. Item seven is approve one-year mowing contract extension to Scott and Company, D. B. A. Seven Oaks, in the amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty-four thousand, twenty dollars. Again, item eight has been removed. And item nine is authorize city manager to execute contract with new gen strategies and solutions for solid waste cost of service and rate design study in the amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, fifty, five hundred dollars. And that is it. So, councils, is there a request to remove any item for further discussion? If not, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, there are move that we approve items in consent agenda, one through seven, and then number nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Move on to regular agenda. All right, we're gonna discuss and consider request to, uh, dedicate one lane of travel going north on Oak Drive to Linden Lane, one lane down Linden Lane, and a portion of southbound lane on that way for the annual Turkey Truck Event to be held on Thursday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, from seven thirty A. M. to ten thirty A. M.
I'm not sure else there is to say. Um, so basically, I mean, the map shows the route that we've taken is the exact same as last year. Um, same road closure, same, um, points for adults to be there. I've talked with Chief Nichols with the B. I. S. D. Police Department about getting, um, police presence at the five locations that we've talked about. Um, he's assured me that we will have people for that. I don't have the names of people, but he told me we would, we would have people for that, so.
How many years have you been doing this?
This will be number ten.
And this, you use the same route every year?
Yes, sir.
Pretty much?
Yes.
Reason I'm asking is that is, I was talking, there may be an opportunity for us to discuss evergreening this.
Okay.
In other words, you wouldn't have to come unless you make a major change.
Gotcha.
That's if council agrees with that.
Okay.
Paul, I'm sure people are gonna, want your opinion?
Just in case you ask a question. Yes, this has been several years, never have an issue there. It's always been well-run. I don't know how you get that many people to run before they eat Thanksgiving dinner, but there, there has been an increase in, uh, participation in this race, and it's always been great, so. And they have everything taken care of.
There any questions from council? Anybody from the audience? All right, I'll take a motion on this item.
I will make a motion to approve item number one as written.
Okay, we have motion.
Second. Can I, can I ask that to be included as the evergreen thing now, or that has to come up as a second item?
It has to, it has to be a sep- a separate item at a separate agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll put that on the next agenda, raise a concern.
Okay, so you want a second?
Yes.
Okay, so we second motion, uh, to approve the request. Any further comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great run. Item two is discuss and consider request for one lane closure on the outer northbound lane of Dixie Drive along Slade Parking Lot from the light at Brazeswood Drive to the first entrance to the Brazeswood Ninth Grade Road on Saturday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, from seven thirty A. M. to ten thirty A. M. for the B. I. S. D. Five K.
Good evening. Um, I'm Rebecca Kelly. I'm the chief financial officer for Brazesport I. S. D. And so, thank you, um, for you, Modesto, for putting this on the agenda. Um, we are going to launch our first annual Five K., our B. I. S. D. Family Five K. We were anticipating about a hundred and fifty participants, and our original route was to run around Mammoth Lake and back. But to date, as of like five minutes before I got here, we have over four hundred, um, active participants. And so, when we got to the three hundred mark, we, we realized that Mammoth Lake, that path around Mammoth Lake wasn't gonna be sufficient. And so, um, we have worked with our B. I. S. D. Chief of Police, as well as the Clute, um, city council and city manager, their chief of police to find an alternate route. Um, it does include closing one lane of Dixie Drive between Brazes Wood and the, the Ninth Grade Road. And so, that is why I'm here, um, with you all today. Our route will have twenty police officers, um, between the Lake Jackson and the city of Clute. So, we'll have ample, uh, police to help direct traffic. We'll also have cones out every five feet of the entire path. So, I know our B. I. S. D. Chief Nichols has spoken with you already, and so, I appreciate the consideration of the request.
Chief, you have any concerns or comments to add?
No concerns at all. It just really, uh, from our part involves that smart section of Dixie Drive and being multi-lane to just close off one lane. It'll be, uh, coned off as well as an officer on each end, so should be as safe as can be.
Any other questions from council? All right, any questions for audience? All right, I'll take a motion on the item.
Move for approve, uh, item number two for one lane closer on the outer northbound lane of Dixie Drive along Slade Parking Lot from Brazeswood Drive to the first entry to Brazeswood Ninth Grade Campus Road on Saturday, September seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Any further discussions?
Good luck. Thank you very much.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, all right. Have a great event. All right, item three is, uh, discuss and consider the Park Board recommendation to allow Brazesport Day Lily Society permission to dedicate, um, Day Lily bed and past member, Dr. Arturo Imperial.
Yes. There are some pieces of information that were not provided in your memo. Uh, basically, the size of this bed. Uh, it's gonna be a nineteen-foot deep by thirty-eight-foot wide, uh, arcing bed around the flagpole of the memorial bed at, uh, McLean Park. And, uh, if you, would you like me to read this?
Yeah, you need to put the mic closer then, so.
Sorry about that. Do I need to repeat that?
No.
Um, the, uh, the basic design of this is an arcing bed, nineteen feet deep by thirty-eight foot wide around the memorial bed, uh, at McLean Park in honor of, uh, uh, Mr., I just lost it.
Arturo.
Mr. Imperial. And the, uh, I think the conversations have been between Robin and the members of the Day Lily Society. And so, uh, I'm basically here to answer any questions, if y'all have any, about this bed. Uh, as you may know, there was previously a bed around the flagpole, uh, which, uh, we removed. Uh, we're in the process of replacing the flagpole there, which was, uh, it, uh, suffered a structural failure. Uh, it cracked, basically. Uh, after one of the storms, we found that, and so, we removed it. It's, uh, currently being, uh, ordered, or actually has been ordered, and we're waiting on installation, uh, for that at this time.
Is there gonna be a plaque?
Yes, there will. Uh, the smallest size that we're aware of, it could be as small as four by six. The largest that we're allowing is correct. And the largest is eight by ten inches. It could go feet, but I don't think you'd appreciate that.
And so, they're going to maintain?
They are, uh, up to four times a year. And, uh, if it requires additional, uh, we may have to do it, or we may see if they'll be willing to come back in and do some more, so. But the minimum is four.
Any other questions from council, Bryce? Any questions for audience? All right, I'll take a motion on this item.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a move to, uh, allow Parks Board recommendation to allow Brazesport Day Lily Society permission to dedicate a Day Lily bed to past member, Dr. Arturo Imperial, as requested?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to item four, which is discuss signs and accumulation at Three Eleven Pine. This time we can discuss.
I was gonna say, good evening, everybody. This is, uh, my third trip here, and we've actually made the agenda. Not sure exactly what that entails, but, but, uh, we're here. Uh, you all, uh, know, I've got fresh pictures if anybody needs them. Everybody knows why we're here. Um, I would like to take the time to acknowledge, um, Ms. Gloria Williams at Three Eleven Pine Street. She's joined us this evening. Hopefully, she'll be willing to get up here and give her perception of, of how she perceives her yard. That's what she replied to me one time, was, this is a matter of perception. I don't know how to perceive it as anything other than filth, uh, lack of self-esteem, um, just no, low morals. I don't know how else to perceive this. Uh, as you know, it did go viral on Sunday, uh, twenty-one. Brazoria County updates, I believe, Facebook updates, three hundred and seventy posts, I believe it was. We've had traffic nonstop. We nicknamed them creepers, by the, through some residents in the, in the, uh, gallery. They, they creep by, oftentimes they get past it, they stop, they put it in reverse, they back up, stop again, take pictures, cars are having to go around them. And this goes on every day, day in, day out, dozens of times a day. People coming by to see Ms. Williams' beautiful lawn. Um, all we really ask is assimilation, you know? Everybody takes care of their lawn, everybody tries to take pride in their lawn and their neighborhood. And assimilation is all we ask. It's, you know, there's, this is uncalled for, there's no reason for it. Um, again, there's a member, number of the, my neighbors here with us today. Uh, one of them couldn't make it, um, the Jenkins from three oh seven Pine Street. My husband and I live on Pine Street. The city council meeting tonight has the subject of our neighbor that lives at Three Eleven Pine Street on the agenda. We wanted to attend the meeting, however, my husband has been ill, and we are unable to attend. We stand with our neighbors who have petitioned about the condition of the yard, vulgar signs, and their overabundance of cars in the front yard. This is causing dangerous situation with cars stopping, taking pictures, and videos of this site. My husband witnessed a child riding his bike who almost got struck by one of the cars taking pictures and not paying attention to their surroundings. Children should not see or be influenced by the vulgar and racial signs that she has placed in her yard. The lady eleven, three, eleven Pine Street has threatened to continue the absurd abuse in her yard to bring down our property values. We're a nice neighborhood, we watch out to help each other without conflict. Also, we're concerned that this could escalate to a more serious matter. My husband and myself are in this dispute, but would like action-taking to clean up our neighborhood. Um, this is echoed up and down the street by, by everyone. Um, again, I've got fresh pictures, I don't know that anybody really needs them. Uh, there's a couple Karen signs here. Kevin's Karen number one. I'm Karen number two. I don't know what I did to get relegated to Karen number two. I kind of take offense to that myself. If anything, I should be Karen number one. But, uh, yeah, this is, this is completely and totally out of control. Um, apparently, it's reached her employers, uh, her J. V. I. C. stickers are off the cars. Obviously, they told her, you can have signage in your yard, or you can have signage on your vehicles. She's chosen her yard, she took the stickers off of her vehicles. Um, again, I don't see this going anywhere anytime soon. Um, but, I don't, like I said, I don't know where to go from here. I'm sure y'all have done everything you can in your powers. Uh, I guess it's just something that we have to live with on Pine Street until maybe we can write more bylaws or something. I don't know where we go from here.
So, I've looked at this quite a bit, and I do have a comment and a question. So, the last two times that you were here, we weren't really able to have a discussion with you, but you made the comment both times that if it was one of our neighborhoods, that the, the problem would be solved. Um, take a little bit of offense to that, because I feel like we try to put everybody else's stuff first. Um, nobody up here, I don't think, gets any special privilege. Um, my question would be, um, has anybody in the neighborhood offered an olive branch? I mean, I know we've gotten to the point where it's, you know, kind of tit for tat.
Absolutely, absolutely, but she's not, she's not gonna have it?
Not well received?
No. She's racist, and she doesn't like white people. Perry and my wife offered to, to come talk to her. Her brother lives with her, unfortunately, bless his heart, he's dying of cancer. My wife told him, maybe I can come and talk to her. Oh, no, don't do that, she doesn't like white people. So, that's off the agenda. I mean, I've tried to talk peacefully and calmly with her, but she's just rude and vile. Um, there's no other way to put it, so.
This, uh, list of items that you gave us, uh, short version, saying, what period of time is this? So, you started in January, twenty twenty? Oh, it's from you? Okay, I'm sorry, all right.
It says, January twenty-one of last year.
So, I don't know if, uh, any of my other neighbors wanna come up here and speak on the matter, but I'd certainly like to, uh, hear Ms. Gloria's perceptions, since, uh...
Well, if she wants to speak, she, she can raise her hand to come up and speak.
Okay.
It's up to her. Does anyone else in the audience wanna speak before we have staff come up and talk? Yes. We'll need your name and address, to really know who you are.
My name is Mary Helen Israel, and I've lived on, I was, I live in the first house that was built on Pine Street, and I've been living there since nineteen sixty. And I run into people that I don't know, and I get introduced to them, and I say, they say, well, where do you live? And I say, I live on Pine Street. Oh, you live on Pine Street, huh? 'Cause it's on Facebook. It's disgusting. It is literally disgusting, and I am embarrassed to say that I live on a street in a town that allows that kind of crap in the front yard. They have changed the sign. Says the same thing, but it's smaller. Instead of being real long, it's now big and square. But there's got to be something that you can do about this. I mean, I don't know, but I'd like to set the house on fire. And that's kind of a bad thing to say from a widow of a fireman, and the fire chief, and the fire marshal, but I would just love to throw something up there and burn the house down. It's terrible. I am mortified, embarrassed, and totally disgusted that the city can't do something about it. I talked to Modesto about it, and I, when somebody approached me about it, I said, well, it's private property. But, you know, there's one thing about signs out front, but what the sign says is just disgusting. And I just think that, uh, surely, there's something the city can do about it so that all of those of us who live on Pine Street won't have to quietly go down and burn the house down some night, so. It really, I mean, just think about, drive, just, everybody in here, go drive down Pine Street. Go drive down Pine Street and see what you think about the sign out front. The trash is one thing, but the sign is just too much. It's just too much. The trash is one thing, but the sign is just too much. It's just too much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Yes, Roberto Rodriguez. I'm a resident at 322 Pine Street. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. I want to thank Chuck for what he said, Mary Helen as well, for what you said. Some points were made about property value. I just want to, as a father and a husband, speak on this. As a resident of this street, I've got a young son who is learning to read. I did not bring him tonight, because I figured we would be showing the things that are being said on this, on this street. I believe it's within the legitimate purview of this city to expunge obscenity, whether or not it's on private or public property. If it can be read from a public road from my son who is learning to read, I believe it needs to go. That's what I have to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't live on Pine Street.
My name is Sherry Hunter. I live at 117 Mesquite Street. Is this a rental? It is privately owned? Let me tell you, I lived, I've been here for seven years. Live on Mesquite and Bougainvillea. Nothing goes in our street, on Mesquite and Bougainvillea. We monitor our street from one end to the next, and that is no like can ask any neighbor that lives on our street and part of Bougainvillea. You don't mow your lawn? I'm calling you in. Tina's been wonderful with the city. You don't do what you're supposed to on our street? You're gonna get it, one way or another. We've got two that we are now in the process of trying to get out. One is a rental, doesn't mow his lawn, wants to have parties, have the whole neighborhood up at 4:30 in the morning. I'm getting called in the middle of the night, "Hey, Sherry, we got this going on." I go down there, I've knocked. When they first moved in there as a rental, I, I went to his door, and I said, "Are you the owner? Are you the rent, are you renting?" "Oh, I'm the renter." I said, "Well, let me tell you something." Told her who, who I was, and I said, "We don't put up with anything in this street. You will abide by the laws. You do anything that's not supposed to, that's partying, having big old parties, we will call you in, and we will get you out one way or another." And I will be talking now to the owner that owns that home and telling him, "He better put it straight now, or, because we won't put up with that, and we don't." A lot of these, our residents have lived there for thirty and forty years. We will not put up with it. I've seen the signs over on Pine. I'll tell you what, I'd make her life miserable. She wouldn't be there very long. I would make it miserable for her. And I think it's wrong that you would put a sign up that way. If that's the way you feel, keep it to yourself, but you shouldn't have it out in your yard, because I'd make her life miserable if you lived on my street, believe me. You can ask anybody in our street. We keep a tight, tight, straight on our street. We all have cameras. We all watch. We have keys to each other's homes. We watch each other's dogs. Nothing goes on in our street, guarantee you.
Anyone else? Would you like to speak, sir? Did you want to speak? Okay, all right. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. And you need to state your name and address.
Gloria Williams, 311 Pine Street. I have been called a lot of things in life. Racist is not one of the ones that I've ever been called. That's based off of assumption on people that I have to live with, live next to. I don't go threatening anyone. I know that you made the comment of, you know, extending olive branch. It's, when I've got people who say, you know, if my dogs are loose, they're gonna shoot them. I'm like, you know, well, heck, that's a dog. Can, I can only imagine me. Just pulling the police reports. It's, it's pages and pages and pages long. It's ridiculous. I moved into Pine Street. I came from Wedgewood Street to Pine Street. And Wedgewood Street is really upscaled to where I'm at now, and it's like Karen's right and left. You can't do, you, you can't do anything before someone calls the police, and then it's not fair. I pay taxes just like everyone else, if anything, probably more, because my house wasn't, I didn't pay my house off fifteen years ago, and my taxes were, no, my taxes are sky high. So I have as much as everyone else. I have freedom of speech. I'm using that to the fullest, and what works for me may not work for someone else, and that's fine. But I'm not gonna come up here and make threats, you know, burn the house down, because as a matter of fact, when I first moved in, that's a threat that was made to me. They're gonna burn my house down. Well, terrorist, terroristic threat. The lady here was arrested. That's how all this started, and it just goes on and on and on. If I threaten you, it's in the police reports, or you, or you, you know, burning your house down, burning your house down. Burn, that, that takes it to a whole nother level. And then they come up here, "Oh, you're racist." That's, that's, I'm not gonna go around calling someone racist unless I know for a fact, which this gentleman here, I have no idea his name, but he said I'm racist. I'm far from racist. A lot of other things, maybe, but racist, I'm not. And then he brings in my job, took my stickers off. That has nothing to do with it. These people know more about me than I know about myself, and I, I go to work, come back, probably work more hours than these two guys combined, on a daily basis. That's a fact. Yet I'm sitting here listening to just two people that know more about me than anything. Then you've got a house full of adults. They're supposed to be acting like adults, yet they're acting like kids. He just smirked. She's over there saying how she would, you know, put me in my place or whatever, and earlier he was just smirking, and it's, it is ridiculous. This is just a tad of what I have to deal with at home, too.
Was, is there any way that you could take an action to de-escalate the situation?
I tried. I, um, this, this gentleman here, this gentleman here came to the police station, said that I tried to get my dog to sic him. That's assault. I don't have any kind of criminal records. I'm not, I don't go around breaking laws and inju, no, that's not me. Yet he came to the police station, said that I said I was gonna get my dog to sic him. He had proof. I went to court. No, I had to show my video, which I've got cameras on five corners of my house because of this. Come to find out, I was innocent. He lied.
The judge threw it out.
I talked to them. He lied. So it's, it's not like, okay, yeah, can y'all come to an agreement? I tried. I have tried.
And so there's no, so here's the problem. You take somebody like myself, who, I like to keep government out of as much of my business as possible, and that requires us to, to take responsibility for things. It requires us to sometimes let something be brushed off, and it requires us to be mature, decent citizens, you know? So that's, that's my, really my question to everybody in the room. Is there any way for us to hit a reset button here?
One simple, I think one of his very first arguments was, "All my cars, these are all paid-off cars." I've actually got two more. I've got a classic Camaro, which is sitting in the shop. I've got a classic Chevy that's getting redone, which will go to my house. Tags are up to date. I pay for them. I pay tax, just like they do.
Sure.
These, these are all paid-off cars. If I want to go buy another car tomorrow, and I do, do I ask for their approval? No. Can we just have three cars? No. It's, it's little things like this. Too many cars, too many of those. Really?
Yeah, no, and I do understand that, because I'm all about, let's mind our own business. But we're at a point now with this, this is the third city council meeting where this has been up here. Is there any way that we can hit a reset button, pull some of the signs down, acknowledge that there's small kids that are learning to read, and just set a better example as adults? And I understand your frustration. I understand y'all's frustration, but there is a solution.
Yes.
You see what I'm saying?
I agree. There, there, when I moved into that neighborhood, you treat me like everybody else. You treat me, I deserve it just like everybody else. Like I told this gentleman here, I didn't call him trash or anything, but he had a problem with me parking in the grass, which was briefly. My brother was gonna unload some stuff. He also has cancer. He was getting his wheelchair down. No, they jumped the gun, called the police, said, "Hey, slow your roll. I pay taxes, too. And it's not your job to monitor this. We've got a city, people in the city, you go tell them. You stay on your yard." You know, so I've tried. It, it's not, we're not, we're here because it, we've gotten to the point where I've done something they don't like.
So what you're saying is there's no possibility that you will remove these signs? You guys back off, you take your signs down, and just try to...
I'm complying with the city of Lake Jackson.
You are, you are.
I am in full compliance.
Absolutely, you are, but I'm talking about in the spirit of being decent human beings and being good neighbors to each other, and just be mature adults. I mean, this is not, this whole back and forth thing is not mature either side, the tit for tat. It's not.
You would maybe understand me if you, all you have to do is pull the police reports. That's it.
No, we've seen, we've seen the stuff.
And it's ridiculous.
And I'm not, nobody's saying, "You're completely wrong. I understand the frustration there also." But what I'm saying is, is that is there any possibility we can be adults, drop some of this, and move on? Pull the signs down, leave her, leave her alone. Don't call the police on her every thirty seconds. Pull the signs down, and just try to be good neighbors to each other. I mean, can we do that?
Right now, those are three of my vehicles. I've got two more, and I'm gonna have two more that are gonna be there.
Yeah, leave her, leave her alone. She can have the vehicles in her car.
That's how it started. If my hitch on my truck is parked this far over into their yard, and there's police reports, he calls the police. I have to move, you know?
Yes, sir, come up.
I'm Kevin, Mary. I live in 300 King Pine Street. That's full of it, because she was blocking our driveway. She, she was deliberately blocking our driveway, so we couldn't get in and out. And then what started the whole situation was her coming in at my yard, trying to pull my fence up. That's what started the whole situation.
Yeah.
And it hasn't stopped since. No. I have it on video. She sicced her dogs on me while I was standing in my own yard.
Yeah.
That's where you lie.
No, you're not.
Sorry, ma'am, you have to, you can't speak.
I'm just, I'm just tired of it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think anybody doubts there's been actions on both sides. What I'm saying is can we drop, drop it, move on, and stop?
I've gone and asked the detective, can we get her together with me so we can talk, and we can just throw everything and start all over again? She told him no.
Unless we let bygones be bygones, nothing is gonna change, and we can be here every day, every day of the week, till, you know, cows come home.
On the back fence with my grandchildren standing in the backyard playing, calling me an effin' bitch pussy.
Well, she's willing to, you know, step down, not, not do...
Are we?
Okay, if, if, if we can stop calling each other names, then we can just get to a point like Councilman says, saying, we can just get to agreement and just, and hit the rebut button, like she said, and just start all over. Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna get anywhere from where we are now, but just keep argument and keep going forward.
I understand that, but she's put on Facebook that I'm racist.
Okay, let's get, let's get past all the races and get past all the races.
Oh, but she's standing right there telling you that I did this and you did that.
Sir, sir, can we, can we start all over from, from this day, from this time right here? Can, can both of us, ma'am, can we get you to agree to that, to start from this day, right now? No, we're not asking anyone to be friends. We're just asking just to be good neighbors, good neighbors, good neighbors to one another and respect one another.
Right.
That, that's all we're asking.
And I'll be asking if you see trouble with her house, call the, call the city, the law, police, not go to her.
No, I understand. I don't, I don't talk to her, because I already have her criminal trespass off my property.
Okay, ma'am.
I'm Beth Kates. I live at 310 Pine. I haven't done, I've never called. I've never done anything. I blow her yard sometimes when I need to. When she first came in there, I, you know, blew the sidewalk. I did everything. She says a little bit of truth and a little bit of not truth. They say a little bit of truth, a little bit of not truth. So I think that if everybody agrees, that's all we want, is, is the signs gone. You can leave the other stuff in your yard. You can have six cars there, as long as they're on the sidewalk or driveway or whatever, and let's try to, to get something going. I mean, your, your brother needs support, too. We would love to be able to support him. We just want, we live across the street, so this is what we see. And I, we have three grandchildren that live with us, and, I mean, that's what they see. There's one up there that says jackass, too, so, I mean, that's what they get to see. We have to be careful, very, very careful of, of bikes, but I just want everyone to work out, and I think everybody's in agreement that if she can just take the signs down and not kill your yard with, we kill her. You know, that we could all just try to work it all out. Everything just started off wrong. I think she was not in a good place, and having with her brother and everything, and... So I think if we all just agree that we can all get along, if we can just get the signs down, that's it.
Ms. Williams, you there still? You're so tiny, I can't see you back there. Is this something we can do?
Unless I'm doing something that is completely illegal or...
You're not, you're not, you're not doing anything illegal.
I'm, I'm not gonna abide...
But we've got a lot of kids.
Right, and I'm not gonna abide by people's likings. You know, they don't pay my mortgage. They don't, you know. If they do, then maybe we'll talk. That's as crazy as, as the stuff that I've been having to deal with. Honestly, it is.
And if that stops, would you be willing, if, if the, what you perceive as harassment stops, and, and you feel like they leave you alone?
You're right, if it stops. Not even two minutes ago, I think a gentleman here said that I stand on my back porch and yell, you know, whatever words. I promise you, if I did, he would record me and call the police. You know, already lying, and I've already taken one court hearing, because I lied, because he lied on me, saying I tried to assault him with my dog. That is BS. I didn't. Luckily, I paid really good money for my cameras, and had I not had my cameras, I'd be up a creek. I'd have that charge on me. I'm not...
Can we start fresh?
Meaning, meaning what?
They leave you alone, stop calling about...
And, and you, you meet us halfway by getting, putting the signs down.
Just the signs. Leave her alone about the cars. If she wants to kill her grass, we'll kill her to her grass.
If they really wanted to come here with the olive branch, all this...
I don't know that they do. I'm, I'm asking you, as a citizen of Lake Jackson.
Can you take the curse words down? I think that's what, really, with the kids and stuff.
I mean, that's the, just the decent kind of human thing to do, you know?
It, it's also decent to, to not accuse people of something.
It is. You're not wrong.
It's also decent not to say you're gonna shoot their dogs. It's on police report.
Or burn your house down.
No. It, it's on police reports. Unless the police officers are lying, I carry them, it, police reports.
But ma'am, we, we are saying that we starting off fresh, you know? At, as of 6:30, 7:30 today, we all agree, both parties, that we can leave each other alone, live and let live, and, and just, you know, you take the offensive signs down, and then you, you have your property, and then no business telling you what you can do with your property, which they shouldn't.
Now, now, almost two years later, that I've been living with hell there, again.
What we're asking is, is can you reset?
No, no, there's nothing wrong with my, my stuff.
You're not willing to reset, you're not willing to change.
I, I'm, I live there. I don't go out and go bother him, go bother him, you know?
So, so, so in other words, you saying you just want to live like this, and you want this to keep going on every single day?
This is representative of you, is what you're saying?
I mind my business. I go to work, come back. Like I said, up until now, these people know more about me than I know myself.
And so you're saying this is representative of the person that you, Ms. Gloria Williams, is?
Yes, I like it.
Okay, well, then, I mean...
Now you see what we're dealing with here.
So ma'am, let me ask you a question. If you had young kids or grandkids, would you want them to be looking at your sign and asking you, mom or grandma, "What does that mean? Explain that to me." Would you be willing to, would you want that?
If I had grandkids? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, if, or if you had relatives, if you had little kids, grandkids, kids, whatever, would you want to be explaining to them what that word means?
If, if I would've come here and I wouldn't have had so much...
No, 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 no. It's nothing to do what they did, what I did, what anybody did. I'm asking a simple question.
We can't go on, y'all just stood here and heard one person say, "Oh, I'll throw a match lighter house on fire."
Ma'am, let's, let's, let's quit going back on the past. Let's quit going back. Let's start from today. We, we're talking, let's start fresh right now. Well, I, ma'am, 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 will you listen to me, please? I came to this city in 1987, and I came here, and it was a city of enchantment. Everybody wants to move to this city. Everybody wanted to be in the city of enchantment, because it was a respectable city that everybody wants to live in and respect everyone. Now, that's what we're trying to keep here, that same image. And that's all we're asking, just to meet us, meet in the middle. We have to start somewhere.
I'll be the first one to apologize for any...
I'll be the first one to apologize for anything I've done to you or anything I've said to you.
That's a start. That, that's a start, ma'am. That, 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 that's a new beginning. That's a new beginning right there. Start today.
And I was, I wanna say this part. I, not that I agree, but I applaud you for standing up. Cause I'm that guy. I'd have gone out of spite. I've done some, some stuff that I'm not proud of. So I applaud you for standing your ground. But what I'll say is the, the line of work I'm in, and I'll say it to everybody, is life is too short. It's too short.
Exactly. It wasn't until I opened up my taxi, I'm like, what the heck? My house not went up? So I started looking, I was like, you know what? And then I was like, hey, I'm not gonna let these people treat me like this no more. Then my signs went up.
I got you. And I think you made your point a hundred percent.
So when you said that, when you said that, that's exactly where I was.
I know.
When everything happened.
I think you, and I think you got your point for sure across. I just wanna say, and you're right, if that's what you wanna do, there's nothing that we're gonna step in, we can't. But I just say, everybody take a breath and just remember that, how short life is. Let's don't live, why live it pissed off and unhappy and why, there's no sense in it. Cause you can walk out of here and get hit by a milk truck tonight and it's over with. I see it every single day. So, just take a breath, everybody, and, and I hope we can, we can meet in the middle. But that's just my two cents.
Thank you. That's fine. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You, you've gotta come up.
Thank you so much. I apologize for looking horrible. My sister said, oh my gosh, what's going on thirty minutes ago? I apologize. I wanna tell you, these people are wonderful.
Did you name your address, please?
My name is Mary Beth Womack Inberland, two fourteen Pine Street, Lake Jackson, Texas, seven seven four two two.
Five six six.
Oh, shoot.
All right.
Sorry, I got nervous. You know? I'm gonna get really emotional here. And I'm really sorry, ma'am, that you have to go through what you're going through. But I want my dog. Every day. Every day. And there are children and they come up and they wanna pet my dog. And they're so sweet and vulnerable and they see this. So what's gonna happen in their school? For bullying. This is bullying. And children are so innocent. And they learn from us. So we have to set a standard. Sorry. Anyway, I just had to come to say that, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I look horrible. Apologize.
All right. Medessa, you just wanna go with what we have, what we've done.
Yeah, we've talked to Ms. Williams on some code violations and she has, um, changed and there was some accumulation that she's corrected. I think she still has a couple of court hearings on those that she has to follow up on. The si, uh, the size, I'm sorry, the size of the sign. A staff also worked with her. Uh, she's now in compliance with that, of course. As our advice from, you know, legal, we can, the city can, cities cannot regulate content. Uh, so she can place those words on the sign. The only restriction that we can do is the size of the sign. And so she's in compliance in there. Uh, there are no ju, junk vehicles. All the vehicles have been proven to be in working order. And they have their inspection sta, tags. Also, the parking is, uh, meets the, the sign or, I mean, the parking ordinance and that it's a solid, you know, foundation for it. Uh, in Lake Jackson, a resident can pave, um, their entire front yard and park on it. Uh, so that is allowed. So if, uh, Ms. Williams wanted to add more cars, she would have to do a little more paving or crushed, you know, crushed rock, crushed rock with a border. So that's allowed a, as well. So right now, she is in compliance with all city ordinances. And again, on the content, uh, our city attorney may be able to speak to it a little bit better, but cities across the United States cannot regulate content.
Okay, well, no, no government can regulate content as long as it's not obscene. And obscene doesn't just mean a curse word. It means there has to be context to make it obscene. So. Right, I mean, she's, she's using her right of free expression on her private property. And so we have regulated as mu, as much as we can at, at this point.
Somebody wanted to answer.
I want last move. She's also taking the mentoring. You might wanna look into this. She had a lady stop by here a few weeks ago and they stood out front and laughed and giggled and pointed and took pictures. She's teaching her how to do it. Um, the silver forerunner, BTM ninety-nine hundred. I don't know if you wanna jot that down, run the license plate. See if you can put a ten twenty on this person and find out what they're up to. I'm sure it couldn't be good. A pupil in training, I'm sure. But, uh, yeah, she's, she's taking the mentoring on, on how to, to do this stuff.
Yes, sir, you have one last.
Yes, sir. Um, I was just wondering what the city's definition is of obscene. If it is not this, is there a concrete definition of obscenity that the city is operating with?
The Supreme Court has defined obscene and it has, you have to have it to somehow be attached to sex. It isn't just the F-word or any other curse word.
Okay.
By it, by itself. It, it has to be attached somehow to a sexual act.
Okay, thank you.
Well, again, there's been a lot of comments tonight and, uh, like, uh, several people on council have already mentioned, uh, and I appreciate, uh, Councilwoman Seth stepping in and, uh, trying to foster the hope of that we can just reset. And that's what, that's all we're asking. I think the neighborhood is asking, uh, to reset and, um, it's sad that this isn't the only incident that we've had in our city. Uh, we've had other incidents, uh, in our city. Uh, it's a growing, I talked to the district attorney. The district attorney said this is a growing concern across the county where people are taking to their front yards and putting signs and, and borderline hatred signs. Uh, that's my opinion. So all we ask is, is that we can reset. That's what we're asking. Uh, the neighborhood is asking that and, uh, hopefully everybody can find in their hearts a way to reset, take a breath. Uh, I think Councilman, uh, Blanchard hit it right on the head on the, uh, nail on the head is, is that, uh, life is short. We spend too much time today, these, this time in our lives, too many people spend too much time hating others. And we just need to find a way to put that aside and, um, find a medium to where we can all coexist. And as we stated, we've, we've done all that we can as a city. Uh, there's, there's courts above us that, uh, that tell us what we can and can't do. And I don't think any of us want our government telling us what we can put as far as words in what we put on Facebook, social media or in our front yard. So. Hopefully we can find some resolution out of tonight, but it's gonna be up to you guys.
We're all for it.
Well, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you all for listening.
All right.
On that note.
Woody, Woody, Woody.
Test, test.
All right. We're gonna move on to, uh, item five, just to discuss and consider requests to allow students to keep rabbits within the city limits for future farmers of America projects.
Hello, how are y'all doing? Thanks for allowing us to get a spot on the agenda and, and bring this before you guys. So we recently learned the hard way that, uh, Lake Jackson does not allow for rabbits in the city limits. Uh, so addressing this with our FFA leaders and just other people in similar situations, maybe they have rabbits, maybe not. Um, they encouraged us to bring this to the city because this is not something currently Braziswood offers a solution for. Uh, there's no FFA barn that they have access to. There's no homes available for rabbits or chickens of that type, any of the smaller type animals that are, are more suitable for homing at, uh, for, you know, growing at home, for raising at home, um, things that require checking multiple times a day. There's just no outlet for that, um, for these folks, for these kiddos. Um, FFA membership begins or can begin as early as third grade. Um, looking at the student body alone at Braziswood, you have about twenty-five hundred kids. If we look at the FFA membership compared to the total number of students we have in just Braziswood, we're touching a fraction of those kids. And most of them aren't even a join because they don't have the avenue, right? Like Jackson doesn't allow for rabbits, chickens. Richwood doesn't allow for rabbits. They allow for chickens. Um, Freeport and Clute actually allow for both. Um, so you've got a whole bunch of kids that don't even have access to this club. They're unable to join. Um, it, it makes it kind of an exclusive club. Um, and FFA shouldn't be that. It should be available to all students, um, to reap the benefits, the scholarships, the work ethic, um, everything that goes along with those, with the, you know, the membership in FFA. Um, so, you know, after discussing this with, uh, several, several in our, in similar situations, um, you know, we, we kinda brainstorm what, what would be the best route to take. Uh, so that's why we're here. Um, we think that there's a way to support students and also keep the, the city, the community and the neighbors happy, right? Um, we think that it can be done through, um, city ordinances. Um, so what I'd like to propose, um, and again, the kiddos are here. If you'd like to ask them any questions, um, what we'd like to propose is some sort of permit, um, that would allow FFA kids to home their FFA projects in their house or, um, you know, raise them within their home, um, given the city approves the habitat, um, the project itself. Mainly, I'm speaking more to the smaller levels rabbits, particularly in our case. Um, I'm not gonna fight the bigger battles for the, the goats and horses as that, you know, that's not what our situation currently allows. And I believe with an ordinance, um, that allows certain stipulations like city approval, um, of the projects, annual inspections, things like that, we'd get a handle on really keeping those things in check. You're not gonna end up, you know, with a neighbor with a tiny backyard and five cows back there or sixteen chickens or things like that. So with an, with a ordinance in place that allows for a permit that gives some structure around allowing these kids the projects, we really believe that it would make the kids have more involvement. Um, it would grow the FFA project. And also I think it would keep the neighbors happy. You know, I don't think that there's any reason that there couldn't be, um, cohesion between these kids raising the animals and also the neighbors. Um, if you want anybody raising kids, you want FFA kids raising animals, right? Or if you want anybody raising animals, it's FFA kids. FFA kids raising animals, cause they're the ones that are gonna take care of it, right? They've got the rigid standards. They've got rigid guidelines to take care of their animals to show them. So they're not the ones that are gonna be neglected in the backyard, causing the smell, causing the nuisance. So that's, that's what I'd like to bring before you, if you have any questions for us, um, in general. But basically, something that would allow the students to participate, um, given annual active membership.
All right, council, are there any questions?
Ms. Kilsby, you're speaking my language.
I like that.
But just a minute. Just a minute, let's, did you wanna hit everything else to say first?
Well, just that, um, I've already had this conversation once up here regarding chickens. Um, and I don't want rabbits or chickens in my backyard. I have no dog in this fight other than I see the merits of the projects that these kids do. Um, I agree. I think that there, again, is a common sense way for us to incorporate these rules to both satisfy and keep our, our citizens happy, our neighbors happy. They shouldn't be, exposed to things they don't wanna be exposed to. But I think that there's a way to do this that can be regulated to accommodate everybody. That's what we're hoping.
So speaking on my son's behalf, you know, he's thirty-five now, but he grew up in Lake Jackson, uh, in four H. So he had a horse. And, uh, so if we wanted him to participate in four H, we had to find a place for him to keep the horse because we cannot keep horses in Lake Jackson.
Sure, sure.
So perhaps for the kids who want to participate in four H and want to join some of those programs, perhaps can look for, uh, places in the county who provide shelters and stuff for those types of animals. Cause like I said, my son is all grown and gone and working and, and, uh, McKinnon and I still have his horse.
Sure.
That I'm taking care of every day. And, uh, so people who, where he keeps his horse, there are people who are keeping cows who are showing in the fair. So perhaps, uh, something else, a way for you to look at some other avenue.
Sure. And a couple, a couple of things there. So that was our first option. We reached out to our FFA advisors, uh, BISD itself. That was our first resort, is what do we do with these projects now that we've started them? Uh, they encourage us to come here. So, um, there is no avenue currently offered at the school board or at the BISD level through the FFA program. Now, I'm sure with larger animals, like you're talking about horses and cows, um, even sheep and goats, things like that, they, there are more avenues for people because they raise those animals. They have people dedicated to raising show cows and show seers and whatnot. Rabbits and chickens are a little bit of a different beast altogether because those don't require care once a day. That's, that's checking twice a day. Um, you know, checking food and water twice a day. You've got junior members that can't drive. So what's their option to get there if they don't have a parent to take them to and from?
Like you know, having a, like you said, rabbits, you're just not gonna have one or two.
Sure.
You're gonna have several of them and you pick the best of the class to, to show that. So those things can get really huge.
Sure, sure.
It's not just one or two or three animals that we're talking about.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They can, but we have the ability, like the other cities here locally, like Engleton, they do six. Uh, Clute, I think does five. I mean, Perilion has a number. We have the ability to regulate that. It doesn't have to be all or nothing. And to compare horses and cows with rabbits and chickens, that's apples to oranges. It's not apples to apples. In space requirement and time requirement.
It's, it's not a feasible option. We have, I'm gonna let them answer those.
I show five breeds of rabbits and two do good in our class. We have two to three in each breed. He shows four, same, two to three in each breed. It, it can add up to a lot, but it shows when you go, people have twenty in each breed. So, I mean, it may be a regulation, we could all, but I think that the amount of rabbits we have is like a decent compared to like.
How large is your property?
I'm sorry.
How large is your, your property?
Just under four acres.
You got four acres.
So you're, why do you have to have so many animals?
We don't have to have them. We, we like to have them because when you go to a show with.
Speaking to the mic.
I'm sorry. When you go to show with one rabbit, you're waiting eight hours to go and get a judge to talk to you for ten seconds. And if you don't win, you, you just go home. So, I mean, bringing multiple animals up there allows you to get more out of it, to see what you need to work on. It teaches you how to like take corrections and work with the animals.
Our first show, we learned the hard way. When you go travel five hours and you sit up there with one rabbit for twelve hours and while you see, like she mentioned, other kids that have maybe different regulations, live in different areas, they're bringing twenty bu, twenty of the same breed animal in showing those twenties. We obviously don't have that luxury living where we live in the space that we have. And so they chose the breeds that they like and they're keeping it to just one, you know, trio or pair between each breed so that we don't get out of control. Uh, we have a, you know, a plan after these rabbits, you know, we have the rabbits, we show the rabbits, they're ready to retire the rabbits. Where we get them from actually takes them back and they re, they rehome them to other FFA members in the community. So there's not just gonna be an abundance of rabbits.
I'm gonna tell you, I live in properties that are zero lot lines. So my house is my neighbor's.
Sure.
Property line.
Sure.
And I've lived there for a very long time. And at one point, my neighbor had kids in FFA and the entire side of my house in their yard was rabbit pens. I would've never known in a zero lot line, had they not told me. I never smelled anything. I never saw anything. I never heard anything.
One of the ordinances that I saw that. One of the ordinances that I saw that makes a lot of sense too, if we're worried about neighbors and visibility, is getting neighbors to sign off. You know, if you want someone to do an FFA project and you've got neighbors in close proximity, requiring that permit to have neighbors sign off on, on the project that you'd like. I know that we've been doing it close to a year and a half and we never not once had one single complaint until, like you said, nobody even knew until the shitty showed up looking for a pig.
You have a unique situation, you have a lot of acres.
I do, I do.
You know, that, that's a unique situation. You know, most lard's in Lake Jackson are not that big.
Absolutely.
So.
That's why I think it's important that the city would have final say-so of the project.
Again, getting back to the number of animals you have, you do breed, correct? Selective breeding?
So, we do selective breed to, we rarely keep them. If there's one that's like beautiful, that will do well in shows for sure, we will keep it. But other than that, they are sold and all the money that is made goes back towards the animals. It goes to their food, it goes to show cause, it's not pocketed whatsoever.
And you have to track all that through FFA.
We actually brought some of our little, we've had two, two litters. And so, she has the little, the records and the income statement that we do track who we sold it to and how much and that good stuff.
There's also, while you're doing that, there's also misunderstanding, misrepresentation, I think, that's out there concerning this issue is that FFA is not a requirement of BISD to be in the ag program.
Correct.
It's just a, it's a social group. And just like when I went to BISD, I was an auto mechanic and it was back whenever we had, it was called vocational schools. We had VICA. But the welders, the guys who were in welding, they did FFA welding and so forth. And so, they are all different kind of projects. There are different projects either in FFA than housing or raising an animal.
Absolutely.
And so, there's, I mean, there's everything from citizenship to giving speeches and so forth and stuff. So, by us not allowing rabbits in the city of Lake Jackson doesn't restrict a student from being a member of FFA or even participating as doing a project. Also, just another comment is that, as I mentioned, is when I went to Bee Wood, many, many years ago, this ordinance has been in place for over, well over forty years. And FFA and BISD has been around for even longer than that. And in the past, whenever students, what I've been told by administration at Bee Wood and at BISD is, is that if a student wants to do a project and the project involves an animal that the, that the individual doesn't have the ability to keep at their home, they find an avenue for that, for that animal. And when you mentioned that it takes care of an animal, did you have to take care of them in the morning and the evening? It's no different than going to football practice, soccer practice, or whatever. You go in early, you go do what you need to go do for practice, and when you get home, you go and take care of, do practice and you go home. The same thing you do with large animals, with animals, any size animal. I grew up around animals. I grew up with cousins that were involved in FFA and four H. Some of them had the ability to house it at their property and others had to make arrangements. That's all part of the education. If there's something you want to do, find a way to make it happen and, and, and work within the, the requirements that are set aside in the community that you're working with.
So, to, to just, to address that, I actually reached out to Massey because I read those comments in a previous meeting minute, a previous city council meeting minute, and I reached out to him to speak with that along with another BISD board member. And I asked them, you know, what are the avenues? And that, that's where I'm, I'm here because when we did reach out to BISD for their avenues, including their FFA director, they didn't have any for us. And so, I mean, I hear what you're saying about there are other projects, but why should they be put into a box to only be allowed to do certain things when other students, because of where their parents may choose to live, may have better opportunities at scholarships? I mean, I know heifers and things like that make a lot more money than rabbits do. I mean, they're never going to be able to do a heifer or anything like that until we, unless we find somebody. And like you said, I mean, a lot of folks make arrangements. Those folks are already in FFA. You're not likely to get some, you know, fourth grader, fifth grader to join FFA because their parents are saying, we don't have room for that. We're not going to do that. So, it is limiting a student, I think, to, to be able to participate because of what their parents are able to provide. Like you said, dropping people off at sports, a lot of kids don't play sports that way. But BISD does provide a practice field for them to play on, right? I mean, FFA students don't get that. They don't get a barn, they don't get any kind of on-campus facility, and it is a club. But look at the athletic, athletic participation compared to FFA participation. And there is a big difference in who participates, when what. And so, there is nothing to be said about these ordinances limiting people's access to joining the club.
And again, I would disagree that it does not limit, there's options. There's all, there are options.
It limits their choices.
You can go and you can raise rabbits. You, you, you can raise rabbits. There's, there's other students that are in the program that are showing rabbits. They're showing ones and twos and so forth.
Sure, and if they were, I mean, if they were in this meeting and you go to their house, they'd be in violation as well.
I don't know that.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm here. I'm hoping to gain access for all those, so we don't have to be in violation. We'd like to do it above board and have the city's permission and backing.
But again, my, when I talked to BISD, BISD reassured me that if a student came and that they wanted to do, to do a project with an animal, they would work with that student and either identify a way for that to happen, or they would coach them into a different animal.
But that's not what has happened.
That's not what happened, though.
So, I mean.
That's a BISD issue then. It's not, it's not a city issue.
But I, okay, so I reached out to BISD also, the board members, and got the same response you did. It irritates me beyond belief that we have millions of dollars that go to that school and they can't find an avenue to build an ag barn, just like Angleton, just like Brazesport. I support you guys a hundred percent. I stand with Ms. Seth, I think it's a great idea. If we do find compromise, though, we're, it's going to have to be compromise on both sides. So, I know you guys have a lot.
Sure.
We're going to have to put a limit on it, and you guys understand that. Are you going to be okay if we do have a miracle and have compromise?
Sure.
We're going to have to put a limit.
Absolutely.
Right?
Right.
Hats off to you for standing up here. I remember standing up there and I was nervous as it could be, so. I, I hate that we're, I realize it's been forty or fifty years or whatever. I'm, I'm not trying to just throw that away, but.
Time to adapt.
Yes, times change, every, plans change. I mean, it, it's a different world now.
You have to wait. Okay, come on.
My name is Jeannie Hearn and I live on Rain Tree. And my daughter did not graduate here, but she did graduate from a high school that had a barn. We are changing for other things. We changed when we built the school and adapted the facilities for the athletes and other things. But yet, there was no program for the ag kids. And yes, I know that kids want to do their passion. They can do ag mechanics and they can do that, but what if these kids' passion is animals? There is no avenue for them to be able to keep these animals, limit their numbers, get permits, make them pay for those things, but give them an avenue to be able to do this at a young age. I mean, you want to teach our, our kids responsibility, give them something to do. Give them the animals and teach them how to be responsible for them.
And I agree, you can do that, but you can also do that by working out arrangements with somebody else to be able to house the animal.
But why rely on somebody else when they can do it themselves with your help?
And again, the program, we have, we have had FFA for decades. And we've had the ordinance for decades, and it has worked for decades.
But it's, it's time to change.
Why is it time to change?
Because we have, we have kids that, that want to do things. You change, you change ordinances all the time. You adjust ordinance all the time. Why is it so different to ask for, for some adjustment here?
And again, it's, the question is, is why for adjustment?
Because you have more and more kids who want to do FFA projects. You have ag mechanics, you have communication, you have judging, you have all these programs for FFA. Granted, not all of them require an animal, but the kids who want to do animals should have an avenue to do that.
Right, and it should work with BISD for that avenue.
But if they're not offering a resource, I'm sorry, if they're not. Offering or offering a resource, I'm just not sure. I understand why the city and, and the citizens can't come to an agreement when they're not harming, they're not becoming a nuisance. I guess I'd be interested to hear the reasoning behind not allowing them. If there's no nuisance, there's no noise, there's no smell, what's the reason for standing behind it? And yes, I agree, FFA has, has lasted dozens of years, but think how big it could be if we allowed everybody access, not just those that, I mean, I am not going to go and do a, a, a construction project in FFA. And I know a lot of kids that don't even consider joining because they don't have the room. They don't have the, their parents won't let them have the, you know, have the cow because they can't, they don't know who to go to. And if I, as a parent, am going to the FFA advisors and Massey himself and asking, what's the avenue? And they're not giving me an answer, I'm not real sure that we can rely on the BSD folks to provide them like they're saying. If they're telling us that they're providing us avenues, then when I ask for the avenue, they're telling me to come to the city, I'm not sure that's providing an avenue.
An FFA project is not required by FFA.
Neither is volleyball or basketball, but practice is required.
You can be a member of FFA, you can still be involved with the social component of it. You can work with another student that has an animal and so forth and learn without having to have your own project.
That limits, I disagree, I think that limits the, the child, the students' learning. And they're, they're not going to have a joint scholarship when you share, when you show a rabbit.
And why can we not consider some change?
Well, I, again, I'd like to hear what the hesitation is. What's, what is it about the rabbits, you know, specifically? Because state of Texas doesn't even call rabbits agriculture. It's Lake Jackson that's calling them agriculture. So, I'm curious why, why the pushback, why the hesitation when they're not making any noise? I mean, we've got dog ordinances that I'm sure have bigger attention than the rabbits not making any noise.
Yes, sir. Okay, we just say, Mr. Willis was up, had raised his hand first, I'm sorry. Earlier, so I'm sorry.
Keep you to Robert's rules of order here. Mr. Mayor. And, and the council, and Cuz, can you say something? You can't say nothing?
Yeah, he can say something.
I can speak, I can speak.
Thank you. I've been wanting to say that for a long time. I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak. And you keep talking about, a long time ago, well, fifty-two years ago, I was in ag at Brazesport High School and I was under Mr. Frank Greenway. What a great guy he was. Best class I ever took, in sophomore, junior, and senior year. Oh, and Vanessa, good to see you and I appreciate everything you've done. I followed you for a long time. And my project was rabbits. And I was talking to my friend this, this evening, Tinker Harland, talking about his grandsons. And I'm speaking on behalf of my seven granddaughter, my grandchildren that live in Lake Jackson and my three children that live in Lake Jackson because I live in the county. And the reason I live in the county is because I was living in Clute. And, and Joe King gave me a pot-billed pig. And the city manager, just out of the blue, passed an ordinance prohibiting pot-billed pigs in the city of Clute. And so, I said, wait a minute. I took my pot-billed pig and I moved to the, moved to the county twenty-nine years ago. And then went back and told them that my pot-billed pig was smarter than all of them and hadn't, hadn't lived in Clute since. So, and Charlie was smarter than they were. So, I give animals a lot more credit than I do human beings a lot of times. And, and, and I'm waiting, I'm looking forward to seeing my, my dogs and my cats in heaven a lot more than I am some of my own kinfolk. So, getting back to.
Not this one here, though, huh?
Yeah, and, and I'm telling you this, twelve years, every court meeting at Commissioner's Court, I would look at the head of the juvenile probation and I say, do you have anybody over there in that ju, in that juvenile probation department that's involved in extracurricular activities? Every time, no. Wow, isn't that amazing? The G, four H, FFA, ban. I don't care what it is, softball, baseball, they don't have, they don't have anybody over there. Because if you have them involved in extracurricular activities like four H or, or ag, you can salvage them. They're not on drugs, they're not out here running the streets. And, and what are we here for, if it's not for the future? And you say, why not change? I talked to Tinker today and I said, you know, I might, I might see my four-month-old grandson. And I said, you know, Tinker, we're going to have to start teaching our children and your grandsons how to garden. Because these kids don't know how, don't know where vegetables come from. They don't know where eggs come from. They don't know where, uh, our beef comes from. And the way things are going, you better teach, teach our young ones how to, uh, grow vegetables or they're going to starve to death. Keep it simple, stupid. And there's nothing better than to keep them, get them exposed in four H. And, and I'm talking about small animals. And you can have a specific use permit and give it to these children. And every city has specific use permits that you could give to those children and let government work for them, not against them. And you can, it, it's, it's so simple. And then let your code enforcement officers go to work. And then let your city judges work on that. And, and everything works together. And so, I just say, go, let these, let these kids show these animals and get them off the streets. Simple as that. We can salvage them. And I'd share like what you have to say.
My name is Gary Hunter, 117 Mesquite. You know, I, I don't disagree with a lot of the proponents, the, the discussion that's been brought up about how good this can be for the children and giving them a good basis for their life, for their, for their future and stuff like that. But there's a couple analogies I'd like to remind the city councils. And that is, one is about the camel in the tent. All the guys inside the tent realize there's a camel outside and he wants to be inside too. And they discuss it for quite a long time. And they decide, well, you know, let's just give it a try, let him put his foot inside the tent just for a little while and see what happens. Everything goes along pretty good. And they got the camel's foots inside the tent. And they turned around, they just said, everything's happy, good, lucky, and they got a little complacent. And next thing you know, the camel is in the tent. Okay? Now you can't get him out. So, that story there, I'm aware of that story is, is in this particular situation, we start off with letting rabbits. What's next? Goats, pigs, cattle. Once you let a little bit in, it's really hard for you to back out and say, no, we can't let anything else. You're going to have to keep on going until finally, you don't have this regulation, this warning. Also, I want to remind the city that this is a charter city as a residential community, not a farming community. Now, there's another analogy I'd like to bring up, and that is about, I've seen this happen, I'm a pilot, an aviator, and I've seen where various airports across the country, they build them around the city for economic development. And before too long, developers build homes around the airport. And then the people move into those homes and they realize that, my God, that's a noisy airplane. And so, they all vote to shut down the airport. And there goes the city's economic development. And it's happened several times across this country. And this is sort of the same thing that's happening here. We're going to destroy our charter for the sake of something like this. The fact of the matter is, when you move into the city of Lake Jackson, you have a choice, okay? And you should understand that it is a residential community. And if you're, if deep in your heart, you want to raise your children in a farming community, this is not your city. Move into the county and you can do all you want. You still have all the conveniences of the city, you're close enough to the city to get all the conveniences of that, but you're out in the county where you're allowed to have these kind of animals. I'm sorry, if you're already stuck in the middle of the city, your best option really is to think about moving. That's it, thank you.
I'd like to say that I understand his point of view with the noise and the planes, but rabbits don't make a lot of noise. And we're not fighting the battle for like horses and cows, we're fighting for rabbits. So, I don't think it's really fair to bring noise into it. And a lot of kids don't have the, the way to move. I mean, their parents can't just get up and move and they want to be a part of a project. So, I don't think it's, I mean, an option to just say, okay, cool, move. Because a lot of kids can't just move with their parents. Because a lot of kids can't just move with their parents.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council?
Yeah, one more.
Well, if we don't show, then we won't learn responsibilities. If we don't...
Take your time.
It's all part of the learning.
Anyway, so you've heard our argument. I think, you know, we've heard, we have several, you know, extrapolate what's in this room to the population. I think we have a lot of support that would really enjoy taking advantage of being a part of FFA, raising the animal of their choice or doing the trade of their choice. I don't think it should be regulated based on where you live. I totally understand neighbors' concerns about animals being a nuisance and becoming smelly, noisy, all, and, you know, the, having a permit and having the city have final say-so, I think, should solve a lot of those problems if it becomes an issue. Like I said, code enforcement officers are there for a reason, but FFA kids are responsible for animals or their trade. That's, that's what they're there for. So I just don't see the need for code enforcement to be that involved if we allow these kids an avenue to do this legally. Because I, I can't speak to who's doing it illegally now, but let's just make it available for everybody to do what they choose to do in FFA. And yes, you can choose different trades, different animals. But again, we're talking about students here. We can't, a student can't say, "Okay, you're right, I'm going to pick out and move to the country. I think I'm going to show a rabbit, pick up and move." That's not up to these kids. And that's not fair to put that on them either. Agreed, it's up to the parents to put them there. But again, this is a club. Just because I have put my kid in sports doesn't mean I want to coach it and install a court in my home. The school offers this club, so they should offer, also offer the avenues. In this case, they haven't. So that's why we're asking just to provide our own avenue in way of a permit that would make the city happy and, and, and agree and approve of any habitat or any animal or any project that would come up, so that they would have final say-so if it's something beyond the charter of Lake Jackson. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Just one comment, that, you know, in this situation, for her is a unique situation. You know, you've got a lot size that really won't bother any neighbors, won't bother anybody else, but, you know, them, of course, you know, they have to put up with the rabbits. But, you know, I'm not quite opposed to having some type of ordinance that, I don't want to use the word "control" or "restrict," but creates a...
Regulates.
A, some type of parameters that you have to create in order to keep rabbits.
The one thing that we, you know, still look at is that is not the lot size, but it triggers. The lot here in question is zoned estate. And we have a very small number of estate lots, and they all front Old Angleton Road. There are no other, unless Sal and the, Sal, looking at the map, I don't think there are any other estate lots in the city. They're just on that stretch, and I guess they were annexed in the '60s at one time, prior to our ordinance, I think the livestock ordinance provision was maybe 1958, 1959. And it looks like the zoning map there shows 1960. And so I, there may be less than 40 lots that are estate lots, and they're all on Old Angleton Road. So that's also a possibility if, and they vary, of course, of acreage size, but I think there, our state definition is over an acre.
So I would also like to say we've referred to our city charter multiple times. Every odd year, we have a charter review committee that sits down and goes through our charter line by line. And almost every odd year, there are changes made to that charter to be updated, to be clarified. There's nothing that says that that charter is not amenable to make reasonable accommodations. And there's nothing that is being asked in this room that isn't reasonable. And frankly, the other option that you have is a referendum. Council can be bypassed if they can't come up with a reasonable solution. You have to get about 400 signatures. And if this group of intelligent people can't come up with a solution, that is a solution that you have also. I just think that we should be able to come up with a solution that is reasonable. And support these kids and not just say, "This is the way we're going to do it." Yet, we do things the way that we've done them, a lot of times because there's good basis for it. But I haven't heard one single person in here say, "Why somebody can't have a rabbit or 10 rabbits?" I mean, I'm not, still not sure what the basis for no rabbits is. So I fully support, I think there's a way for us to reasonably figure this out.
I think we asked the, half the audience earlier to compromise. So I think we can do the same, and I'll do that by making the motion. So I'll make a motion that council adopts or changes the current ordinance that we have, which will include all of the limits that we talked about before. All of that's going to have to be written in there. We're going to have to have two meetings to discuss it and all that. But I'll make the motion that we do adopt that to allow for the chickens and the rabbits.
Can't talk of chickens, just rabbits.
To allow, okay.
Rabbits.
Rabbits.
Rabbits. It changed from the last time I saw it. That's fine.
Second, is it time to do that?
Do it.
Is it time to do that?
I'll take the motion if y'all agree with discussion, that's...
Second.
Motion is second, and that is to...
It was, it was pretty messed up. I fumbled through that. We're going to, we're going to either amend or create a new ordinance to allow for these animals with the stipulations that council agrees upon. And that's going to take some discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from council?
We don't have.
I just want to clarify, this motion is to...
So what...
Yeah, how can we have a motion if we don't know what, how many animals or how many...
This is, no, this is just a motion to let's do this thing, and then we'll have to have...
Hammer out the details.
The next session, y'all are going to have to come up with all the details, and then they'll draft an ordinance.
This is just to continue the discussion, come up with something.
Well, why can't we discuss it first and then come back with a motion? Then we'll have all the solid evidence and the ground.
Well, this, this motion is to continue the discussion, to come up with those ordinances, otherwise it just dies here.
Yeah, to start drafting an ordinance or changing the one we have.
Basically, this ordinance is saying that if you approve this ordinance, this motion is if you approve this, that you approve of going forward with finding a method to allow rabbits for projects. And you can't say FFA or whatever it has to be for any organization. You can't just be FFA or 4H or whatever.
With some limits on...
That's what I was asking. There's not a limit, you can't do...
That's what the next meeting would be.
That would be the, that would be the next meeting.
If we approve this, then we'd have to hash out the pieces, then the pieces would come back, and we could still say, "I don't agree with the pieces," and it could still die.
Right, so at the next meeting in September, y'all would start hashing things out, and...
So all this is, is just, all he's, all the motion is, is do we want to take this further, or do you want to end the discussion here in saying that we're not going to go or changing the ordinance?
Okay.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. So we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the table, please say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed, say no. No?
No.
JB, what'd you vote?
We can look into it.
So is that a yes?
Yes. I would have rather us looked into it first and then voted on it, but I would like to look into it and see what, the numbers and stuff we're trying to talk about.
Well, I need a vote. It's either yes or no.
Yes, I'll look into it.
All right, so we will move forward with looking at hashing out the... All right, we'll move on to item six. We have a discuss and consider request for DHK Development for a curb cut on Oyster Creek Drive for a commercial parcel between Kroger's Commercial Shopping Center and Woodshore Community Drive.
Yes, sir, you too. Mr. Roberts, they passed that ordinance because, for that poor pig, to get you out of town.
Sir.
Hey, Cuz, can you see me?
Hi.
You look pretty rough, Cuz.
Yeah, thanks.
Hey, Ted, you got long cars, too.
All right.
Take care.
All right. We're called.
Again, everybody should have it for animals, never the taxes or the budget. It drives me crazy.
Yes, Mr. Knopka is here again to present some findings of his study. And I believe he's also brought his traffic engineer.
That's correct.
Also to go over the findings, the report. I think we sent you an early copy. It's rather long, and so I asked them to kind of put together a slide presentation hitting some of the high points, so they could go over those with you. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Knopka.
Thank you. And I'd just like to, before I start, I'd like to introduce who's here with us. CJ Snipes, city manager of Clute, is here. And you were not responsible for the pig ordinance, right? Okay, okay, that was a long time ago. And Mohammed Huck with EHRA. EHRA was the firm that did the original TIA for Woodshore and the Kroger in that area seven, eight years ago. And then Noah Worley works with, with me at DHK Development. I'm president of DHK Development, I stated last meeting. We developed everything in Woodshore, with the exception of Woodshore Marketplace, which is the Kroger and the connected retail. Okay, so reason I'm here tonight, once again, set the table, I'm requesting a curb cut on a, on a four-acre piece of commercial property. It's located in, the property is located in the city of Clute, on the south side of Oyster Creek Drive. This would be to the, to the east of the Kroger Center and to the west of Woodshore Crossing. I've got some notes that I'm referring to, so I, bear with me. Okay, so at the previous meeting, when I presented this, there was a request among some members to go ahead and, and basically do, do a traffic impact analysis, which we did. And I engaged Mr. Huck and EHRA to do that. That's been completed. So we're going to talk about that tonight, and then, so we'll present that tonight. Now, the, we've got some materials here that I want to just explain, because this can be a very long presentation, and I don't want that, and you don't want that either. Unless you do, if you do, we can satisfy that, but I don't think anybody does. So anyway, we'll have the entire TIA, so if we need to refer to any pages, boom, it'll be up on the screen. I've got a, I guess we used to call them slideshows, but it's a slide presentation, which really generalizes things and bring things down into a pretty simplistic explanation. And the bullet points, if you will. And then I, I will say this, I'll make a note to say that everything we did from the last meeting, when I, when I met all of you, until this meeting, we had a conversation with Modesto and Sal and some of their staff members this past Friday. So we, so Modesto, there's even some very small revisions to the TIA that I sent you last week. And I know Mohammed has the revised one, and I think you guys are working together in case we need to pull, pull up the new one. Okay, so let's go to that, how did I get to that slideshow? It's the one, it's the one that started off with, there we go. Okay, so what, what this is, and I don't know if you have hard copies of this or not, but what this is, this is the letter that I had sent to the city manager and the city back on June 10th, where we made the request for the curb cut. And I gave the description and the history of the project and so far. The reason I wanted to start off with this is because depending upon the recommendation that you may elect to approve, if any, it's your prerogative, but there, there may be some trees within the right-of-way that would end up needing to be removed. If that's the case, I want to bring up, and I, it was in writing, but I didn't discuss this last time, is that I've made an offer, and it's in this letter in this last paragraph, that I would, I would plant 50 trees, whether they be oak trees, whatever you need them to be, but there would be 50 trees that we would go ahead and plant within the right-of-way or thereabouts. We can discuss that a depth further, how that wants to be managed and so forth, but I just, I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, so the next, the next slide, this is, this is the general landscape plan. So what, what this, what this plan, what this plan shows are three things that are important. You see a number of trees in green that are, that are planted along here. Those are not existing trees, those are new trees, they total up to 50. There is also a 40-foot-wide setback. That's a setback that's on private property, so it's beyond the right-of-way. And, and the attempt here is to go ahead and continue the, the parkland, and I can't remember what you call, Oyster Creek Drive to the east of this. But, but basically, it would continue more of that park area, if you will. That's 40 feet, again, of setback, it already exists in front of the Kroger. We'll, we'll continue that all the way to the east end of the project. And again, that's on private property, it's privately maintained, so forth. Also, what you, what you can barely see is a continuation of the wide sidewalk that would continue on all the way to the, to the eastern boundary of our property. Okay, so now, I wanted to move on, and if we could jump two slides. Okay, we did it, yeah. So the previous slide said, "Traffic impact analysis," that's the name of the report. And Mohammed, is it correct to basically say that it's a, it's a, an update of the original report?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so, so there you go. So the, on the next page, what I want to explain here is that while I'm asking you to consider a single curb cut on one parcel, this report goes a lot further than that, okay? The instructions that I gave to EHRA weren't simply to say, "What effect does that curb cut have on Oyster Creek Drive?" What I wanted to demonstrate is what the effect would be of Woodshore being completely developed out, okay? All the homes being built, all the commercial being built, including the commercial on this four-acre tract. The reason I felt that that was important is because we already have streets in place, right? And I, frankly, I didn't, I thought it'd probably be a little dishonest of me if I just gave you the results of just the commercial property. You need to understand the whole scope of the project, the scope of everything. What, what, what is the effect on Oyster Creek Drive at the end of the day? And what we've said, we've estimated that by the, in two years, that that's when the project could potentially be developed out. Okay. The next page, the study purpose, again, this is simple, it says, "To determine the traffic impacts on the adjacent roadway system, primarily Oyster Creek Drive, to evaluate traffic circulation issues within the project site." Again, the project site is all of Woodshore, not just the four acres, but all of Woodshore. Okay, "To develop efficient access system for the development," well, again, access onto Oyster Creek Drive. And I believe that Dixie Drive, South Dixie, is also included in that. And then to recommend any necessary traffic mitigation measures. If we want to go to the next page then, the study intersections, you can just take a, you can take a look at all the intersections that were studied. So let's go here. So of course, the main intersection at Dixie at Oyster Creek. Okay, number two, this is the Sandalwood intersection, signalized intersection, so Sandalwood and the community to the north, and then of course, the Kroger Center to the south. Number four is Woodshore Crossing, existing. Number five is Juniper, which eventually would become a four-way intersection as development increases, development advances, I should say. Let's see here. Number three, this is the driveway. Let's see here, number three, this is the driveway that goes into the Kroger Center at the front of the Kroger. And then, number six is the intersection with Woodridge Crossing. What we're talking about here is what would be a new curb cut, which would be located right over there. Okay, and I want to say this, step in at any time, and if I say something wrong, you're the smarter person, so please, please jump in.
Mr. Konopka, he's tried three times.
Say again?
He's tried three times.
Yes, okay, well, the problem is, he speaks so intelligently that I can't even understand some of it. So, but I'm kidding when you say that. But if you want to get up here with me, go ahead, but the analysis, in fact, why don't I let you take the analysis? So the next slide, why don't you just outline those 15 points?
Sure. Just want to add one thing on the, sorry, my name is Mohammed Huck. I work with a company called EHRA Engineering, and we help DHK Developments to prepare the TIA. Just want to add one thing on this slide. If you look that number one, two, three, these three intersections are signalized intersections. And number four, five, six, those are unsignalized intersections. Their evaluations criteria are different, so that's why I separated those two. We'll talk more about that. Just giving you a brief overview, like what are the process involved in traffic analysis for this type of study? So typically, we look, this type of study looks into two different peak scenarios. One is in the morning rush hour, which we call morning AM peak hour, another is evening rush hour. And there are three conditions we look at for this type of study. Number one, existing conditions. Existing conditions, like it's very common for any traffic studies, like, okay, what is going on right now? So that is basically takes care of what are the roadways, like geometry, number of lanes, intersection configurations, intersections, control types, like whether it's signalized or unsignalized. These are the things come into the model to analyze. Second thing is background, background conditions. So this development is gonna, it's not gonna be built in one day, right? It's gonna be built, probably in this case, we assume like it's gonna be built in the year 2024. So which is like two years from now. So two years from now, the existing conditions is no longer be the existing conditions, because traffic will grow, right? Even there are no developments, but there is gonna be a steady growth for the regular traffic, which are right now. So we look background condition, which is basically does not include these developments. And then, we look another scenario, project condition, that includes the development traffic. So in the same year, in the future, we compare these two scenarios. One is without the development, another is with the development. So that we can compare and identify if there are any impacts because of that development. And then, if we see, okay, there are impacts, then we do some testing, like, okay, alternatives, what could be the possible improvement solutions to mitigate those impacts? So this is just a general overview, how this traffic study works. Now, when we evaluate those intersections, there is a methodology we follow. It's written in the Highway Capacity Manual, this is nationwide used, this manual. It has all the step-by-step process that tells how to evaluate the intersections. And there's a software we use, we have some video clips we can show at the end, if you would like to see. This is just some basic stuff, like what are the things goes into the model? Again, these like road geometry, intersections, lane configurations, then signalized or unsignalized. If this is unsignalized, where the stop signs are. Is that always stop-controlled intersection, or is that two-way stop-controlled intersections, those kind of things? The most important thing is traffic volumes. So I already mentioned that we typically look at two peak scenarios. One is in the morning, one is in the evening. So for the existing condition, we do the traffic counts. So basically, we collected data for the intersection, turning movement counts. When I say turning movements, that means, okay, how many going left, how many going through, how many going right? In the morning peak period, we did traffic counts, in the afternoon peak period also. So those are the traffic volumes being used to analyze the existing conditions. Now, background condition, this traffic has been grown certain percentages. That traffic volume's been used to analyze the background conditions. Then, project condition, that includes the developments' traffic. So for that, what we do based... So based on the size and type of the developments, we estimate the trips. See, if you look at the, so again, there is a manual also, it's called Trip Generation Manual. That manual provides guidelines based on the land use type and size to estimate the traffic, okay? So if you look at this table, maybe I can pick that, like, fast food restaurant to drive-through. This is a particular land use, and this is 4,000 square feet. It generates like 82, sorry. And this is weekday AMP tower, adjacent street traffic, oh, thank you so much. So if you look at this column, it generates 82 traffic, which are entering to that development, 79 exiting. And this is in the AMP tower, adjacent street traffic. And similarly, PMP tower, this is like 16. So we did that estimation for different type and size of those developments. Now, these are the total traffic that will be generated because of these developments. Now, ultimately, it's gonna be distributed in the network, right? Some people will come from the east side of Oyster Creek Drive, some will come from the west side, even from the west side, some may be coming from west of North Dixie Drive, south of Wester Creek Drive. So there is a trip distribution assignment that we did. And finally, we added those trips on top of the background traffic to come up with the total traffic or project conditions traffic. So after computations of all of this, then we... Zoom out a little bit, yeah, okay, thank you. Now, this is the steps, all we come up, like, all the traffic volumes, development of traffic model. Now, the question is, how we determine that, okay, a particular intersection is operating fine or not good or not acceptable, how we determine that? I mean, there has to be a parameter to evaluate the intersection, to conclude that, okay, this intersection is working fine. So to answer that question, there is a concept called Level of Service, LOS. So this is most commonly used in traffic engineering. So this is like a grading system, like students' grading system. It ranges from Level of Service A to F. Level of Service A is the best, there is no delay, free-flow traffic. Delay mean, I mean, zero to 10-second delay, there is, I will show you the table. Then Level of Service B, I mean, not like A, but it's still good. Level of Service C, Level of Service D, and then, Level of Service E is like, there is a cutoff point, like, between the demand and capacity. Like, when demand is at or near the capacity, that's when the Level of Service E. Level of Service F is the failure condition, that indicates it's significant delays, huge congestion, stop-and-go conditions, that kind of thing, it's a failure condition. Typically, Level of Service A to D are acceptable. That means that when any intersection traffic operations falls within Level of Service A to D, no mitigations are needed. But when it gets below D, which is like E or F, then it says, okay, now think about, now consider doing some improvements to bring back to at least D or better. Now, we are...
Could we move along some, because it's... A little background is good, but you're a little bit, a lot of detail.
Oh, okay, so I think I can directly move to the analysis results. This is the last slide of the traffic analysis slide. If you zoom in there, so these are the analysis results that we come up for all the intersections. On the left side, these are the intersections name. On the right side, there are three columns. One is for existing conditions, one is background conditions, and another is project conditions. So these are all Level of Service, and these Level of Services are based on delays. So we have added a column also there for delay value. Delay is like how many people, I mean, it's like, what is the waiting time? What is the stopping time at the intersection? So if you look at here, all the Level of Services here are within the acceptable limits. There is no E or F, but this is for the AMP tower. So if we go to the next slide, there's...
At first, I'm sorry for that, never mind.
Yeah, oh, no, that's a good point, like, you see on the table, we have separated, like, signalized intersection, another one is unsignalized intersection. So for signalized intersection, the Level of Service is reported for the overall intersection, because every approach, traffic at some point of time is stopped because of the red light. So it is reported as overall intersection. But when it is an unsignalized intersection, let's say, Wester Creek Drive and Woodshore Crossing, only stop sign has Woodshore Crossing approach. So traffic coming out from Woodshore Crossing, they will only stop. So they only encounter the delay. Traffic on Wester Creek going eastbound and westbound through, they don't have to stop. So their delay is zero. So for unsignalized intersection, the delay is reported only for the minor approach, which has the stop sign. Now then, this is the PM, yeah, this is the PMP peak hour. All, everything is working fine, only you see the Woodshore Crossing is Level of Service E, but this is only for traffic who are coming out from Woodshore Crossing. And it's a very small amount of traffic, so that's why we're not recommending any improvements there. Now, talking about that west commercial drive, that driveway, we come up with three alternatives to provide the access to that commercial development. Number one is it's a full-access driveway, it's a curb cut and median opening. And we are also recommending a small left turn pocket in the westbound direction. So that's gonna separate the through movement and the left turn traffic, through traffic and left turn traffic, providing efficient flow.
While you're going to and three, I'm just gonna interject. At the last meeting, a big concern that was expressed was the concept of U-turns on Oyster Creek Drive. So what we wanted to do was show that with all three alternatives, there's a way to mitigate that concern, but depends which alternative you like the best, okay? Go ahead with two and three.
So alternative two, it has left-in option, but no left-out option, only right-out option. So traffic coming from the east side of Wester Creek Drive, they'll be able to get into the development at this intersection. But people coming out from that development, since they are not allowed to make left turn, what they're gonna do, people who wants to go on the west side, they will have to go and make a U-turn on Woodshore Crossing. So there would be some, so this alternative is gonna cause some traffic coming out from this development, use the Woodshore Crossing as a U-turn there. So mitigate that impact, we are recommending a small left turn pocket here, that's gonna separate the through traffic and the U-turn traffic. Now, once we do that, there will be some geometrically limited space for the U-turn maneuver. So we are recommending addition, small amount of pavement here. This is something called standard loon. The purpose of this is to facilitate the U-turn movement. Want to add something?
Go ahead, I'll turn to three, and then we'll...
Okay. Alternative three, it's the right-in and right-out only driveway. No left-in, no left-out. So in that case, the U-turn is gonna be on both sides. So we're recommending loons here, and also recommending loons there.
That one is proposing a U-turn area almost right at the intersection? If I'm understanding that?
The third alternative?
That's a horrible idea.
Yeah, that's why it's the, the alternative was sequentially, yeah.
The concern I have with two and three is, first of all, U-turns.
Yes.
I think last time we talked, we said we really don't want to see something that has U-turns in it. And the other piece of it really causes me upset stomach is the standard loons that you're talking about. Because what I can see is, is what you're doing is you're having somebody do a U-turn. They're going out of traffic and then coming back into traffic, because that's not a lane, that's a turnabout, a turnaround. And so that just, to me, it just seems like that's just an accident waiting to happen personally. I mean, out of the three options, the only one that I see that's as any viability is option one.
Which creates the whole worst problem about the third cross-cut.
Yeah, and I have that same concern with them wanting to turn back towards Krogers.
Without a signal, for sure, that's the biggest. I mean, I'm looking at the demographics in the area, the way it is, you're gonna have a lot more traffic coming in and out going west than you're gonna have coming east, but there's no development, much development on the east side.
Yeah, actually, that's how our distribution is.
So the population is a lot bigger.
It's around 70% like coming from there, and then 25%.
And that just exacerbates the problem that you have right now.
Does any of this take into account also, like, when the train's crossing, and you've got traffic backed up?
Probably there is a railroad crossing on Al, what is that, Angel Town?
Yeah, boarding at the road.
Okay, no, that was not...
I think the best option still would be to get inter-local agreement with the cross, that would be your best bet. That would solve the problem.
It's just, I will say, the city of Clute has undertaken, CJ, don't let me speak for you, but the city of Clute is undertaking an effort to work with that property owner to get access through their property. I can't, and I can't represent that one way or the other, but what I did explain to EHRA is don't consider that, in fact, disregard that when you do this study, so that then you can see what the results are without that, okay? And, you know, of note is the fact that the Sandalwood intersection, you know, the neighborhood to the north, basically, I guess the Level of Service goes from a B to a C in that, is what I believe happens. I know it's not worse than a C. So, that's that. So, you know, so two points is, I mean, I hate to take your time on this, but I have no choice. The right-of-way is entirely within Lake Jackson, as you know, so I have to come to you. And secondly, well, besides being a developer who likes to develop, right? Okay? Um, I've also got an obligation to the city of Klute to continue to, to, uh, to develop retail and commercial, which diversifies their tax base. And that's one of the requirements in my chapter three eighty agreement that I have with Klute that we agreed to, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, whatever it was.
You do have a choice. You, uh, instead of that extra lot, those three lots that you have, create one of them as outlet to feed into that, uh, Wood, Woodshore Drive right here.
The, those, those lots are, it's actually a little bit to the right.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's none of this, but back over here.
Right. If you can reduce this just, just a bit. There you go.
Yeah.
Right. Those. Okay, so these, tho- those are lots here, uh, and they, they're, I mean, they've been sold to a builder. Builder's getting ready to build on those. They were platted as part of section one, which was platted in advance of, of the whole Kroger deal being developed. So, you know, people moved in, they've had platted lots, and believe me, two years ago, I flew the trial balloon of what it would be like to put access there, and it, it, it was not well received at an HOA meeting.
Uh, CJ, could you tell us what you're working on in Klute to address the second entrance and exit?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Uh, can you guys hear me over my shirt? That's mine. No, I can tell you that we meet with the developers again at St. Core White's on Thursday morning. Uh, we've made it clear what our objectives are. We've actually got two different objectives. We're hoping to retire a three eighty agreement with them, but also avail ourselves of cross access here. In talking and reading through the EHRA documents, uh, I, I don't know how much value there is in that, because I still think you're gonna see folks, if you have that drive, wanting to go in and wanting to go out that main drive. So, but that's.
But is this, a second drive, is it conducive to safety also?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and that's our, that's our approach to the, to the argument, yes, sir.
I mean, that would solve our problem, right?
I don't know that it would. I think it solves part of the problem, but I don't know that it exacerbates. And I would defer to the traffic engineer on whether or not it actually would provide much relief uh, on that east-west access, because I still think you're gonna have folks. We see it today, uh, on Dixie and places where folks try and go left, try and go right, uh, where their ship ideally would not happen. So I'm not sure that you're still not gonna have folks that are gonna wanna try, whether, obviously, if there's no, if the median's in full existence there, you're not, you're gonna have, you're not gonna have that issue. But if we do a curb cut, you're still gonna see folks coming in and trying to get in and out that way.
I mean, you know, by just putting a curb cut here, it's gonna just move the problem from over there over here. It's gonna create a huge problem, people making a U-turn, wanting to head back to Lake Jackson.
Well, I think that's, if, if you, if you were to do any of these options, option one is the only one that's viable to eliminate the U-turn question. I'm not sure what the traffic count coming in and out, and I don't recall, because I don't have the report in front of me, but I think his modeling here indicates that you're only getting to a level C at certain times for a very brief period. And in the MUTCD, you're, the design manual from the, the text dot, you're too close to signalize those intersections, which further exacerbates the problem. You need about a thousand feet between those. But I think if they were to, to talk about, and I, putting words in the mouth of the developer, which is always dangerous, to look at maybe a potential decel lane going in and an excel lane coming out, that might, and I don't know whether you modeled that or not.
No, you're, you're talking over the decel lane at that one, commercial.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, there are, so some agencies, they have some standards, okay, if there is more than, like text dot in this case, if there is more than sixty vehicles making right turn during a peak hour, consider a right turn deceleration lane. Now, uh, looking at the Lake Ja, I, I couldn't find anything, uh, any standard for that, but haven't recommended the right turn lane because the traffic is not gonna be that enough.
Well, that's just a speculation, depending on what kind of three businesses go there.
Hmm, yes.
You're gonna wanna hope the traffic count is much higher than that.
Yeah. I mean, those are definitely estimation, yes.
So, I mean, you know, you're.
Yeah.
Again, I think if you, with option one, I think we would want to work in a decel.
Decel lane.
Decel here and a, an acceleration lane here. Again, that allows these people, because these people are coming through the intersection. If you're gonna turn right, it gets, gets you off, out of the, the traffic, so that you can decel and get in here without holding up this traffic very much. Same thing here, is you get acceleration, so you can get up to the whopping thirty-five miles an hour, uh, to be able to merge into traffic. That, I think that would smooth out that intersection, uh, right there.
Is that without a cut? They'll take away from parkland also.
It's not parkland. This is not parkland.
I thought he was gonna give that.
That's what was assumed in the past, but the parklands stop at Dixie. These are not parkland, those are easements, it's not parkland.
Mr. Mayor, if I.
Yeah.
On that question, Klute has continued on your tradition of maintaining a, a broader widerway and a broader sidewalk. I think you can still accommodate the broader sidewalk there with the decel lanes. But he's correct, that is not dedicated parkland, it belongs, it's a privately held, privately maintained strip of land between the roadway.
The one thing that, Mr. Gary and I mentioned to Mr. Knopka was that, you know, we didn't, we didn't know what, if council would be favorable to, you know, to any of the alternatives. Uh, but the one suggestion still is that if council is amenable to something at the intersection, that it'd still be contingent upon having access to either Kroger or Woodshore to give a safety valve, that it's not all concentrated at that driveway.
Yes, I, I agree that, that if we go forward, is that we would want that, that we can, that this agreement would be contingent of that you get the secondary. For a lot of reasons, mainly for the safety, but then also it, it will have a potential reliever here, because there will be, hopefully there will be people that'll shop here and decide to, you know, go pick up a root.
Yeah, instead of taking their life in their own hand, making a U-turn, go back to the traffic line.
Again, we didn't, again, when we talked to them, we didn't want any UE's. So this takes you out the UE's, and that second, second entrance allows these people, once they come shopping here, they can come and go into the Kroger shopping center and stuff and do stuff there. And also, I mean, I'm always a believer of, and I always told my kids, is if you have the option of an intersection going to a signal intersection versus one like that, so I would even, even though it's a little bit out of the way, and I'm not young like some kids are, but I would go through here and hit that signal intersection versus doing that thing there.
Mayor, I did have a question for Mohammed. Mohammed, on your table, though, you showed the biggest drop in grade at which you're crossing.
Right.
It dropped to, I think in the PM, to an E.
Yes, yes.
Does that then tell you that that intersection at some point in time needs to be signalized?
You know, for signalized intersection, there is a separate methodology that signal warrant analysis by Texas MUTCD. You mentioned about the Texas MUT, it has the total nine, nine, total nine warrants listed, so.
Okay, so just, just a simple looking at the grade.
Yes, the, the, I mean, signal decision is not only dependent on level of service. There are other factors also.
Okay.
One of the things is how far the closest intersection, adjacent intersection is.
I just wanted to highlight that to the city manager of Klute, that if he did get a lot of complaints from Woodshore Crossing residents, that would be a bill that, you know, would, he would want to pick up, uh, if the council was open to it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to say that all of our residents are bright shining.
All right, so what do you want from us tonight?
Uh, the developer would like you to make a decision if you, if you would like any one of these alternatives, and if there are any stipulations.
Again, to throw it out there, is the only option that I think, and this is just my opinion, anybody else has got their. My, the only option that would be, if we would go ahead, and would be is that we would have a decel and acceleration lane, and all of this would be contingent on you getting a second in and out, uh, through the other shop center. The other two options are, no, no.
I, I can work with what you proposed.
Is that with the cut right there?
Yeah, that would still, I mean, this is, this is option one, so this is the cut that they're showing. This is option one, you, you, what you would add to this is a deceleration lane here and an acceleration lane here. And then it would be all conducive, I mean, conditional on, uh, they get a secondary, uh, cut into that other center.
So you're talking about a full cut?
So we're going from a curb cut to now a median, right? Because they're gonna go all the way across?
This is all the way across, this is all the way across. So that, that cuts out all the UE's and all that kinda stuff, so.
With, with no traffic control?
Just a free-for-all. My two cents is, and no, Mr. Doug, you're a nice guy, uh, and I would never want to discourage any developer to come from Klute or from us, but it, it's very irritating that we're having to bend over backwards because somebody on your team dropped the ball. And that's the God honest truth.
Yep, I understand.
That really irritates me, especially if somebody goes out there and gets hit and killed. But if the rest of council wants to do it, then I agree, but it has to be contingent upon the second.
Entrance and no U-turns.
Point of egress, ingress and egress.
What we should have done is taken the hit in the pocketbook from one of those houses and went that way. But that's done, we can't change that now, so.
If, if I could have done that years ago, I definitely would have done that. I definitely would have done that. It's just that, anyway, I've, I've already told you, but I, I appreciate your comment.
That was my two cents, we can't change it now.
I can't disagree with what you said.
Let me, let me ask this question. If, if we get the access to.
He's a, he woke up.
Yeah, I've, I've been listening the whole time. If we get the access to the Kroger, like, we're talking about making this contingent on, then do we need this in the first place? That seems sort of.
Well.
Like, unnecessary. What am I missing? Because I, frankly, I can't see all the same stuff that you guys are seeing, I'm looking at my packet, but.
Uh, just from a developer, a comment that I'll make is that if you don't get the, the access to Oyster Creek, then you've got development occurring at this far, uh, east, east end, so to speak, and those people maneuver all the way back. So it just provides another access point for, for the, for the development. And what it could also do is with, with both of those, the, the access that the mayor spoke about, and then the curb cut, it could potentially also take some traffic away from the intersection, the lighted intersection at Sandalwood, for those folks who want to then turn right or turn east on Oyster Creek Drive.
Right, for, I mean, for the, for the curb cut piece, but then you wouldn't need the, the median to be taken over.
Right.
Then you have the U-turn issue.
Yeah, if you don't, don't put the median cut, then you run into the U-turn issue, and that's.
But, but not if they have, not if they have access to the Sandalwood intersection through the Kroger parking lot, right? They'll just go there instead of making a U-turn.
You're, you're hoping a lot.
CJ, I had a question for you. On your access, uh, is Discount Tire leasing the property, or are they, do they own the property?
They're on a ground lease.
They're on a ground lease?
Yes.
So you're still talking with the same developer?
Correct.
So you could, I'm asking, can that be accessed through?
We, our, our goal is two points of contact there, but the reality is, is we'd still, from a safety perspective, want that curb cut on the Oyster Creek to be able to get fire apparatus in and out without obstruction going through a parking lot.
I, I have a question. I'm looking at this on an old Google Earth. Isn't this, does, is the street gonna go all the way to Forest Bin Court?
No. No, there's houses already developed behind it.
There are houses in the way right now? Well, let's not do that.
So, yeah, I understand what CJ's saying, is, is for bringing in emergency apparatuses, instead of driving through parking lots and stuff and getting congested there, it'd be safer for them to come straight in off the street and hit that. And, and again, you still have the secondary to where, for some reason, that's blocked because of, um.
But that's only serving those three businesses, right? That's gonna only serve those three businesses. So how is the apparatus gonna change? That, that entrance is gonna.
If you, if, if you don't have this cut, if you don't have an entrance here, if you have a fire or something like that, they're gonna have to come in here and either cut across here or something like that, and they're gonna have to go through parking lot to get to there. And that's just not a perfect situation for, you know, when you bring in a ladder truck or whatever type stuff. So here would be, you'd have where you come in, come straight in and service these, these businesses, and then you could also come in through the backside and take care of something else. I understand the concern about the, not having the front entrance.
But if you didn't have a curb cut here, you still could bring your equipment.
I was talking about here, is getting in a second entry. You're talking about the curb cut.
Right.
And the median cut.
Right, median cut.
Again, if you don't put the median cut in there, you're gonna have a UE. And earlier we said we didn't want UE's. If you're coming, if we're backing off on the UE's, well then, then you go look at options two and three.
No, no, if you, if you have a cross agreement here, then people are not going to go to make the UE, because that UE is not gonna be easiest thing in the world to do, because you're gonna have a lot of traffic. People are going to, like you said, you know, you, given the choice that you and I would normally would have, I always would go to a, a controlled, uh.
Yeah, but I'm an old guy.
The young kid's not gonna always go to that.
So what everybody's gonna look at is they're gonna go in there to some unfriendly restaurant, uh, that, you know, then they're gonna, once they're finished, they're gonna wanna try to get out. They're gonna jump out the quickest route out. They're not gonna go through this area here. They're gonna jump the quickest way out to get out and go home type stuff, so. It's just, again, it gets back to is, you know, first of all, if we wanna allow the cut, if we're gonna allow the cut, do you wanna have UE's or not? If you don't wanna have UE's in option one, seems like it's the only one that we have right now. And again, if it's contingent on the secondary entrance.
Well, like you just said, you, you, you know, this kid is gonna jump out and go ahead. You don't want them going through the intersection without a traffic light, making a left turn, with the traffic going both ways either.
They're doing it here.
How long until you're gonna have an answer on that second drive?
Uh, our plan is to have an answer by this, by Thursday this week, and if we don't have an answer, we will force an answer, which could take a little bit longer. At the end of the day, if we have to, if we have to enter litigation, uh, to get the access, that's.
Oh, that's gonna be a circus.
Right.
Hopefully you don't ever do that.
I hope not, I hope not.
What is the resistance for getting the second access?
If I can be honest with you, um, it's a real estate transaction, uh, that they apparently did not want at the time, but have decided that they can leverage now. So they basically put a hate strip between their property and this property. Correct.
So, again, we, we could make agreement contingent of that secondary. If the secondary never happens, it ain't gonna happen. If the secondary happens, well, we've already made the agreement of moving forward on that section there, and I can move forward, so. It's what council would do. So is there any, uh, further discussion? If not, is there a motion on the side?
If any, if I make a motion, that we look at it whenever Klute has, uh, all the rest of the information.
So we re-study it, or we look at, we make our decision after.
Yep.
They get their secondary.
That, that'd be my motion, if we're looking for a motion.
Okay, I respect what you said. Can, can I just ask the, why the contingency on the vote wouldn't work? Because again, that allows us to, 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 to basically move forward, but knowing full well, that if we don't, if we don't get that access as described, there's no project, it's not gonna happen. I mean, your, your motion is not gonna continue, is what I'm saying.
And what he's saying is, again, it's a money issue, and if they have, they don't enable him to play a bit more hardball, or the developer be hard, be willing to pay a little bit more for the, the cut or whatever, it gets into y'all's business, but anyway, it, I, I don't. Anyway, there's a motion on the table, so we can, we can move forward with a motion and a, a second, and then we can discuss it.
No, actually, I did not make a motion, I said, I could make that motion if, if, if somebody was looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to consider alternative number one, contingent upon a second access answer.
Okay, and the acceleration and deceleration lines.
And the acceleration, decel, and no U-turns.
And, and that's with the full cut.
Full cut.
Okay.
Number one.
Option.
The option one.
So we have a motion for option one with excel and decel, right lane with the stipulation of, uh, a second, second entrance and exit is, is acquired. All right, we have a motion, then a second.
I'm sorry. Did you second that?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, was there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a second, was there a second?
There's not a second.
There's not a second.
Okay, we got a second from Baker. All right, any further discussion?
Does that option come with your, your trees you were selling us?
If you'd still like the tree, I'm not selling them, I'm giving them. I mean, I'm planting, I'm paying to plant them myself, so. Yes, that's part of the deal.
The fifty trees.
I mean, if we're gonna have to eat this sandwich, I'm gonna take the trees with it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I heard five hundred trees.
Yeah, I heard, that's a typo. It's fifty.
All right.
It is fifty trees.
Do you wanna accept the fifty trees in that motion?
Yes.
All right, so we have, all right, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, all right, motion carries.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
All right. Now, let's go on to item seven. Does anybody need a, a break?
God, I'd love a cigarette. That's just me, we don't have to.
Talking about a restroom, bro. No smoking in the restroom. All right, well, we'll move on. All right, item seven, we're going to discuss an ordinance aligned for administrative inspection of massage establishments to check for compliance with state law. And this is just an update on what we've learned from the people.
Right, so there were two meetings that David Walton led with the masseuses who came, and they had, one of the things is the definition of massage therapist. They had me add Asian bodywork. I looked it up, it sounds exactly the same as everybody else is doing, but it's added. And then, let's see. Go down to the second page. All right, so we initially had all interior doors except the restrooms had to be kept unlocked. They said they have storage spaces and offices and stuff that they want locked. So I switched it to, that's in little B, keep all cubicles, rooms, booths, or any area where you're massaging people unlocked. Instead, they, they were worried about, you know, keeping their stuff safe. I also took out, we had maintained a clear and unobstructed view from the outside, and they were really concerned about the sun and the heat coming straight through, and I guess some of them just faced that afternoon sun, and it was just gonna be too much for them, and so I just, I took that out. And that was it. Those are, with those two meetings, those were all the changes that they had.
Okay, and so the idea here is that if we don't have any questions or concerns, then you would bring back the ordinance.
I'll bring it back first reading and we'll invite.
Invite the people.
All of the masseuses and massesters to the first reading.
So the, one of the biggest issues that I had heard before was them blacking out all the windows to begin with. That created a safe haven for people who were doing.
Well, they pointed out they're not doing anything naughty in their front rooms anyway, and that it was just, they were all concerned, they all have tinted windows because of the sun.
I mean, I'm not concerned about naughty business, I'm concerned about the, trying to look for the correct word, description is the dealings, you know, the, for, pardon me? No, not illicit behavior, the.
Interaction.
You know, just. Sorry, I'm, my senioritis, senioritis, it's hit my brain. But you know what I'm talking about, it's.
No, I, I hear you and I agree with you, because I can, I can pull up in a patrol car in a different city, and they, as soon as I pull up, they're opening the curtains that they have to see what's going on. I, I want that back in there, I don't want that. I don't like that. They shouldn't be able to black the windows out and. My barber shop gets sun in it and it's hot.
I know what I'm just talking about. You know, when they solicit people, child, children and women for.
Traffic, that's right, sorry, thank you.
You know, people are sitting there doing that kind of activity, it's obvious, you know, when you have five people sitting in the waiting room. Worse is, you know, if it's not black and you can see that. So, I mean, the sun is not that bad. Every other business in Lake Jackson doesn't get burned up for having, you know, not a blackened.
But then this isn't being applied to every other business in Lake Jackson, correct? So if I ran a.
So how you gonna know if they trafficking by them just sitting there?
Dress shop, I could block out my windows, right?
I don't think you are, I think he's just saying you're giving them another layer of concealment.
Yeah.
Just, it makes it a big secret.
Yeah.
And there's no reason for that.
I'm just asking.
Was it a large request from the attendees?
They all were like, no, don't take my tent away.
Well, some of, some of Mark's even, and they, you know, some of them that have been around for a long period of time, they don't even have, the front of their building has been converted to storage, and so their actual entrance to their building is around the corner and through a, 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 patron type of stuff. So the guy that I get my acupuncture and stuff does, his wife does massages and she was here, and that's how they're set up. And so they, you know, you, you'd say, okay, well, to have that business, you gotta have your front, you know, you gotta have a window in the front. And they don't have a window in the front of the building.
Or just a reception area not to be blocked from view.
So.
So what it said before was maintain a clear and unobstructed view from the outside. That's all that it said.
Of reception area, maybe that would be more comfortable with that part. I'm not interested in, you know, what business they're doing, I'm just, reception area, that would be more conducive to trafficking is what I'm concerned about.
You know something, I will put this back in and I'll make it the reception area instead, and then maybe the audience can explain it better than I, I did. What I noticed was the one in the Academy Strip Mall next to Dr. Shandling.
Lee Warken.
Yeah, you can't see in. And they're above board, but they, yeah, it's tinted and then they have the lettering and, yeah, you can't, you can't see in there. And so it would be their cost to have to go and do all of that, correct? Okay, I'll add that back in, but I'll put reception area, and then we'll just see how it flies.
I mean, is the council okay with that? I mean, if I'm the only one, don't, don't change it because of me. I just got one vote, so.
Like you said, you can put it in there and then they'll come and then they'll, there'll be a first reading anyway, so they'll say, and they'll explain why they don't think it's necessary.
I mean, if I understand right, we, y'all, y'all were trying to go in a direction of trying to cut down on stuff that wasn't supposed to be happening with this, right? Is that where y'all wanted to go with it?
Right.
Which I agree, I, I support y'all. Then let's don't let them black the windows out if we're, you know what I mean? It kinda defeats the purpose, right? I'm not trying to see all the way to the back, but I agree with you. Let's at least have some sort of.
So, well, the other thing is, I mean, I have clear and unobstructed view. There are tenting where you can see through the tenting?
No, I, I think that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just black, I mean, you can't see.
But that's still clear and unobstructed, it's just not blacked out.
Or put a number, you can put a number on it.
They can still have.
Some tenting.
I mean, we, we have those rules with car windows, right?
Right, put a number on it.
Whatever the number is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, we'll move on, we'll bring that back. Now, we're doing item eight is discuss and approve the county twenty twenty-three road project request for North and South, Southern Oaks listing.
The county sent us a couple of weeks ago their request for county road projects. Of course, you approve the interlocal tonight is just our annual agreement. But with that, there's a second portion of, do we have any projects to submit? One of the ones that was discussed last year and was kind of discussed, you know, this, this year, but we just couldn't get it in the CIP, was Southern Oaks Drive, and it's divided into two sections. With the recent reimbursement of funds from Winter Storm Yuri, I think there was a little over a hundred thousand into the CIP, and still some unassigned funds from COVID. This project could be considered if you wanted to do a budget amendment. We, we could steal, you know, from those two, those two pots and do this if council wanted to, to do this project. Again, it's in, their timeline for the county would be in April. That's usually when they pave. We have to kinda get the project into them, you know, this month. But if, you know, council at some point in time wanted to step back, I would say that we would probably need to tell the county sometime in January, you know, that, well, you know, we were putting it tenderly on the list and we're trying to decide funding, because I don't have it on the agenda tonight to do a budget amendment. I'm just trying to explore if council is interested doing this project.
Well, northern and, and the north and south Southern Oaks is a blacktop patch on top of a blacktop patch on a blacktop patch. It's been abused for decades. It's falling apart. And, you know, the perfect world would be go in, grind it down, put in a new base and so forth, but we can't do that. So we can put, the county says they can come in and do a good overlay and possibly give us ten years or so on.
Mayor, I'd like to add a little bit more clarification on that particular.
Do you disagree or disagree?
I disagree right now. And I disagree because I talked with the, with the foreman for the county and asked him what the, the description of the, of the work was. He told me it was a grinding job.
Well, that's what, well, let me disagree with you, because that's what my original understanding was. But then when I talked to this guy here, he was saying that, no, I don't think it would include the, right, so you're saying you've got clarification?
Yeah, I got clarification on that, and the reason why Mr. Mundo, Mr. Mundo said that is because when I looked at the description, it didn't include that. It just included the, the base, I mean, the.
Did you speak with the foreman or did you speak with the linemen of the county?
The linemen of the county. And he explained to me that what it involves is a grinding of the existing base to about eight inches down, and the application and stabilization of that base with an oil base. What do you call it? An old mix. After that, they compact, as a matter of fact, it's a one, one-step operation. It's machinery that does it in one step, and he was willing to, he didn't do that, but he was willing to bring in a YouTube that showed that particular procedure. And so this is the reason why I'm bringing this up, and it's got a three-inch carpet on top of that one to finish it off.
He didn't say it was doing curb and guttering too, right?
No, curb and gutter, no, sir, I didn't say that, no.
Sal, in general, with the county work, you've been pretty happy with the quality of the work.
Beggars can't be choosers, no. They, they do, now the, the equipment that they have now seems to, to be improving, and therefore they're, he tells me that they've done this in several towns, so I'm sure that it's, it's worth it.
And this is material cost, if we were to do this.
No, I mean, you're.
For bidding and engineering out.
Yeah, you're adding about three towns, correct.
So take what we can get.
Yes, correct. And he also told me that the, that the timeline, I asked him, when could you move on this thing? He says, yours probably will be at the very first start of their program. And it could very well be, if the time and the weather permits it, it could be sometime this, the end of this year. Yeah.
Well, then I'm just, I've said nothing correct tonight.
I sent you that information.
We had a conversation.
Is there any other questions on this item? If there's not, what, a motion? You want a motion to approve?
Yeah, so I could submit the letter and then we would come back at the next meeting and amend the budget. Yeah, as Sal said, but I would still, now, I am correct here, I'm recommending to look for two sources. One, the CIP and the unaccount, the unassigned money from the COVID, COVID relief funds.
Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the county twenty twenty-three road project request for North and South Southern Oaks.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item nine, suggest and consider an ordinance to install a stop sign at the intersection of John Quill and Cypress first read.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have an ordinance to read. Uh, this is an ordinance by the council of the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, designating the intersection of John Quill and Cypress as a one-way stop, providing for a penalty, providing a savings clause, providing that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced five days after publication.
All right, just before I ask for, for a motion and discussion, because I just wanna do some clarification, because I was asked on why I wasn't in favor of this. And the reason why is because the residents, that, that neighborhood's been there since the fifties. And so what has changed since that time period? Have we changed, we added homes, have we changed, put in new streets, or we done whatever? And we, we haven't done anything, and it's, what are we trying to address here? Is it a true traffic issue or is it behavior? And the reason why I always, I'm against putting a stop sign there is because if it's just going after behavior is, is because the stop sign's not gonna change the behavior. The behavior's there, and so that's why, I mean, yield, right now, state law says it's a yield. And so that's why I was, I was against it, and I'll continue to be against it because I just don't see, I don't, I'm not just a big fan of putting stop signs in, just put stop signs in. So now, we had, so that was a clarification, what discussion? All right, so now I'll take a motion on this and then we can go into discussion. So somebody wanted to take a motion on this? Should've kept my mouth shut. No motion? All right, that means that this, we're not gonna go forward with your.
That took me hours to draft.
And we appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Uh, item twelve, ten, oh, this is the ones we love so much.
Yes.
Cast ballots for TML, Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees election. When do we have to get this done? It's been a long night.
Amen.
I thought it was December. No, that was something else.
No, that's.
That's the other.
I can actually make this relatively easy for you if you'd like. In the communication packet, I did go through and I put recommendations for every position that is open. I either selected incumbents because we have no issues with the board as it sits now, or if there wasn't an incumbent, I selected the local person from our region. So that, that's kinda how we went about our recommendation.
So Mr. Mayor, move that we take Megan's recommendation and cast that a vote.
Okay, can we get away with that without having to name each person?
How many people are there?
Nine places.
No, you're only doing four of them.
Four positions.
Yeah, let's, let's.
You can name the people, they're on the communication page right here. I made it easy.
Sure. Allison Hayward, Mary Dennis, Louis Rigby and.
Opal Mal.
Opal Mal Jones.
Okay, so we have a motion to cast our vote for those four individuals. I need a second.
Second.
We have a second. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? All right. Got that done. Thank you, Megan.
Good job.
Okay, and, okay, David, make it short and sweet. Only the good stuff.
All right, I have a half an hour presentation prepared. Specifically for Mr. Blanchard. No, actually, there have been a few changes. McDonald remodel, we did not send that out to a third-party review. That was done internally and that's ready to go. And then I know that Regal Storage and Harmony Park are scheduled at tomorrow's planners meeting. So those should be moving off the list too, hopefully. Any questions, comments or concerns? What would you see?
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It used to be that their dollar amounts were available.
It used to be that their dollar amounts were available, and you all took the dollar amounts out, because, you know, that can change. The reason I like those dollar amounts, and you knew if they were just fixing a toilet, or were they fixing something bigger, what type of remodeling were they doing, so if that's a.
It could be an expensive toilet.
Yeah, but. If, if council would like to see a projected valuation, we can, we can definitely.
That's the only reason, it just kinda gives you a kinda idea what they're.
It's only projected, the citizens didn't like it, who got the permit, because.
Okay, we'll leave it off.
Sometimes they argue that you're affecting my taxes, which we really want, because we called up the, the appraisal district, they said, we don't even look at your number. So we just, we took it out since the number didn't mean anything.
Sorry.
We can share with you, though.
We could.
No, I'm just curious.
It just doesn't.
Six dollars. Whereas Austin Powers would say one million.
That was a conversation we had a long time ago, is we don't ask that, we don't ask the.
Well, we don't use valuation to determine permit fees for residential projects, we still use them to determine permit fees for commercial projects, the legislature did vote many years ago that you can't use it for residential.
You know, like McDonald's, I mean, you know, this.
Yeah, so we do have that information for commercial.
Happy to add that.
We can share that with you.
We can definitely put that on, if that's what you'd like to see.
Okay, anything else, and so not your bunt cake is gonna happen?
That's been planned, I mean, we've, we've got information on that project.
Dunkin' Donuts.
I have not seen Dunkin' Donuts, sorry, David. Julia's Donuts, yes, not Dunkin'.
I know, they're the slowest people working over there, I don't know what.
I don't know, I've seen some awfully slow projects.
Yep, yeah, apartments. All right, we'll move on to item twelve.
The water leaks, we gave you, I put it to your seat revised list this day of what's been accomplished, and we've added some, thank you, Ms. Seth, for catching three that weren't on our list, and so now we're gonna go back and resurvey the city Thursday and Friday with the sanitation crews to make sure we have not missed anything that's on the list, but.
I just texted you one more, sorry.
No, thank you, we need to know, I don't want them sitting out there upset, but, yeah, we're gonna survey the city once again, make sure we don't miss anything, that's, would be the worst case scenario, but, no, we're making headway. And then the other item on the proposed bond issue, just to give you an update, this is in, you know, in the rate analysis that we, you know, did this summer, but it looks like, you know, I was estimating somewhere between five or six million that we would have to, to go out, it looks like it's really closer to six million, and these are the three main projects for the wastewater treatment plant. It's the Headworks, the Electrical, and the SCADA, and these were identified in the study that H.R. Green did in January, or February, they presented to us, and we've put an inflation factor, since the numbers are already a year old, and then we've added some contingency on two of the items, which the engineer did not do, and you can see their check sheet, it's kinda small, but that was taken from page fifty of their report, and you can see the three items that they recommended that we're gonna go ahead and recommend pulling the trigger, and then the last one is just the calendar, what staff works through, you know, with the, with the legal team, and the finance team of going out for debt, and this is really James's area, but we should, I think on the schedule to bring to council, the competitive bids are December twenty-second, and then we would have funds December twenty-ninth, and then we'd start that project. Engineering is already started with H.R. Green on this, on the Headworks.
Okay.
That's all I had.
All right. Construction updates, the bridge version.
Yeah, I was going to, I was gonna introduce, I was gonna introduce Mr. Yuri, and I promised him that I would introduce him. Sal is here to answer any questions from this report.
I'm just here to answer questions, that's all. Excuse me?
Cliff notes.
Cliff notes, just, if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer. Thank you.
No, go ahead.
I have two quick things, I'm so sorry. The animal control facility is moving forward in about two weeks, on September eighteenth, we're gonna go out, we're gonna start advertising for bids, it'll come back to council after we open them end of October, so council will see it the beginning of November, that's when we'll select a contractor. The only other thing that may be of interest to y'all, the downtown canopy project, we are done with that, we should have the WPI eight certificates, which is for the wind certifying the roofs, we should have those by the end of this week, early next week, we'll give those to the businesses, and then we're done, hands off, they can start doing whatever they want with the green.
It looks nice.
Thank you. So that is done, that's all I have.
All right, is there any interest? Start with, I think I forgot about Chase last night, we'll start with Chase.
The skate park grand opening, we have an invitation. Seventeenth.
Ten a.m.
Sorry, it's written funny. Yes, Saturday. They're putting a lot into that to make it really cool for the kiddos, so that's all I had, we have, we have skateboards for you.
Yeah. Benay?
Nothing.
Nothing.
JB?
Matt, Matt, Matt.
Matt, you got anything?
Oh, sir, thank you.
All right, and then we got JB?
Got nine eleven coming up.
Right, so we should be getting information.
Sunday, Sunday.
We should be getting information, hopefully, Laura?
If you wanna hear me sing, I'll be there.
What are you gonna sing? The National Anthem?
God Bless America.
God Bless America, that's even better. The only thing I've got is, on Saturday, is the Alden Dial Grand Opening Office is from ten to four, and they would like if you guys can attend, they'd like for you, us to show up around nine thirty, and so all the handshaking and all that kinda stuff, and then cut the ribbon at ten or whatever, and at the public.
Also, who, who's on the museum board?
Me, and.
Are they having something Friday, this Friday?
Yes.
Museum?
Yes, we're supposed to have gotten something on it, and I think. Six P.M., and that was also council's invited to that, too, that's at the.
Museum?
Museum, the actual museum.
We will get through this.
That's at the big museum.
The historical museum.
The new museum.
No, hold one, go to the old one first.
Huh?
Go to the historical museum.
The one we spent a bazillion dollars on replacing the roof.
Yeah.
The blue roof.
Just across the street.
All right, that's, my desk, do y'all have anything?
No.
All right, okay.
No.
All right, we're done.